Your attention please. Jeremy, am I coming through? Okay, we're on the air. If I can have your attention, we're going to call a meeting to order. Will the clerk read the, or call the roll?
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wirick.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Present.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Councilmember Blatts.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Let's have the pledge allegiance. Paul, would you lead us in that?
Sure.
After me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. We'll do a quick agenda review. Do it? Well, I didn't. Where's my man back there? Jeremy? Do I need it closer? No, he's telling me. Okay, I'll speak in your.
Close, sir? Close, sir.
I was told to stay away from the microphone before, and there's a reason for it. Okay, can you hear me now? Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to review the agenda. Mayor Protem Wirick had a good suggestion, and particularly in light of the size of the crowd and the length of time we may be going through at the items. We are going to hold the council member report until the end of the agenda. By popular clam, apparently.
Mayor Johnston.
Yes.
But I may, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt if you're going to make some more suggestions. I'm not going to make a move approval with an amendment.
Okay, I think that's it.
Okay. A move approval with that, one amendment, and one more amendment that we add future agenda items to the end of the agenda tonight and on future meetings.
Okay, fine. Good idea. Okay, there's, I don't know that we need a second, but is there any objection? If not, so ordered. Okay. We have two presentations, and I would like to start with the happy part, because it may not stay happy all evening. We have a recognition of a retiring fire chief, division chief, bat chief, captain, firefighter, Nordoff High School graduate, one of our own, Norm Plot. Norm? Norm, if you'll hold it right there, I want to just tell the audience a little bit about you, just in case they don't know all about you. A graduate of Nordoff High School, 40 years service in the fire department. He became a battalion chief in 2001, same year that I became a CEO. We were colleagues back then. He led us through things like the Wheeler Fire, for those of you who've been around long enough to remember the Wheeler Fire, pretty scary, and not that they aren't all scary, but some more than so than others, also the Green Meadow and a number of others that I won't enumerate. He was a major player in the emergency medical response, and I'm told 31 lives resuscitated by this man. Some of his people, I don't know if they refer to you in front of you or behind your back, but he's known as Stormin' Norman, a very passionate member of the department. He was the firefighter of the year at one point. The thing that is really should impress us all, not only for Norm, but, and John McNeil, who's going to join us, is excellent service. This man was recognized by the Management Council of Ventura County for excellent service to the community, and we snooped around a little bit to say, to what extent does Norm go to provide excellent service? And not that this was the greatest endangerment to the public welfare, but a citizen had a plumbing leak. I believe it was a toilet leak, although I'm not positive about that, but was being flooded, and the men from the department went down to help out with the excess of water, and I'm told that Norm walked down to the hardware store and out of his own pocket, bought a part, came back and repaired it for. Talk about the above and beyond has no meaning. And then I'll cap this off with what I think is most important to people, at least to my generation, and that is mentoring. Norm has done a lot of work with young people to encourage them, and my understanding is a number of your cadets actually went on to very successful careers and also joined the fire department. Is any of that stuff not true?
That's all true.
Okay, right, yeah. I'm trying to build my credibility with our community by that.
Yeah, just.
I don't want to give any fake news, or, you know.
Just spoke to one of my past cadets from Nordoff High School. He's a scientist with AmJim, and he's looking for cures for cancer.
Oh, wow. Well, one life makes a difference. Norm, you're a pride to our community and a great citizen, and I have a certificate after all those 40 years. This is no gold watch, but.
Is that a shower or video?
council, and police chief James Freihoff, behalf of fire chief Mark Lorenzen, thank you for these great honors. I really appreciate it. You know, I've been around long enough to where my dad was a milkman and remember going to Royal Oaks Dairy on Persimmon Hill, so it does go back a long time. Was in the work experience program with the late Bob Heller out of Nordoff High School and was a cadet, and we just pinned a badge on one of my cadets from Nordoff High School this last week. And another one of my cadets is captain for Los Angeles Kennedy Fire Department, all Nordoff High School graduates, and then a scientist working at AmJim, so it's a real pleasure. And I'm just humbled and honored with this proclamation, and it's just a pleasure to be a lifelong resident of the city of Ojai and to serve the citizens. Excellent customer service is what we strive for and work hard for each and every day is to make the lives safe of the people around us. And now what I'd like to do is I'd like to introduce your new fire chief, also a Nordoff graduate, and a man with over 30 years of service to the Ventura County Fire Department, one that's no stranger to Ojai. As a matter of fact, to Councilman Haney's crusade and good work on water conservation, John, four years ago, led the charge to change landscaping at Station 21. He was captain there at the time and put a drought tolerant, he worked with a company called Green Goddess to plant cactus and drought tolerant plants, long, kind of a little bit ahead of the curve, so to speak. So that's, if you go by there and you look at that landscape, John, that was his work at the Ojai Fire Station. Also, John lives here in Ojai. He's also a resident of Ojai with his wife Sherry and two kids. And John is, comes to us, he was the battalion one in Camarillo. He was in charge of the USAR, heavy rescue, the crash rescue, and has been an excellent chief officer, and I'd just like to say that you're in good hands. Like I say with John, he knows the area really well and is a great command officer and is going to serve the city very well. John?
All right.
Good evening, Mayor Johnston, council members, city staff. I want to publicly thank Norm for his nearly 40 years of service, fire service, most of it right here in the Ojai Valley in various ranks that the mayor mentioned. I've been spending probably the last three, four weeks with, I'll call him Norm, since he's close to retiring, I can get away with it. We've been transitioning into this position for me and his transition out, and it was pretty clear from the beginning that relationships are really important to Norm, really important to our fire chief. We spent, well, we spent just about every day handshaking and getting to know folks from various agencies, and it's pretty clear that he's the master at relationships, not only establishing them, but he cultivates them and he progresses them way beyond anyone's imagination, to the point where he's got a seamless relationship with a lot of the agencies that the fire department touches, and in particular, the city of Ojai. So I'm, he's mentored me, I'm one of his products, and I also see the importance of these relationships, and I look forward to working with the staff and representing the city of Ojai. So, thank you.
And the most important thing are these people out here, that we keep them safe.
Okay. Our next item, which is not listed, but it is a monthly thing that we do, and I want to thank Angelo, who comes and keeps us abreast of what's going on in the water world, or the lack thereof. Right now, we've just experienced a very wet winter, which we were looking forward to. Angelo, do you want to come on up and give us a quick where we are now?
Just don't stand in water.
It'll tingle.
No problem.
We need the TVs on?
Are we in need of a technician?
Light's on.
Ah, there we are.
I thought I would take this opportunity to bring you up to date on our current status, and what I've always tried to do is to let you know what the facts are and what the data is, even though some people don't necessarily like the data, that's where I come from, so we'll present some more data. I have to figure out how to work this new gadget. Okay, so the drought is over, and my question here is really, and according to the state drought monitor, actually the US drought monitor for California, this is valid as of March 21st, 2017. If you pick out the colors here, we can see that Ventura County is, has been declared still in moderate drought, and there's only one place in the state that's worse off than we are, and that's the darker yellow portion, clear in the southern part of the state. So folks, we are still in a moderate drought. I'll bring you up on Lake Casitas. Current storage as of today is a little over 111,000 acre feet at an elevation of 501.05, and as of today, as of yesterday, the lake level is starting to drop. So that means that obviously that outflow or usage is greater than what's flowing in. And both creeks are still flowing in, there's no diversion at this point. Storage on 123116 was 89,000 acre feet. So this winter, the lake has risen a little over 22,000 acre feet. And that's a good thing. How good is it? I want to remind you of this chart that I published several months ago to show you the trend from about 2011 until now. That showed the lake has been falling off at 20,000 to 25,000 acre feet per year. I haven't updated this chart because we ran out of time today due to the emergency to get this presentation done, but there's going to be a little blip down there at the end of it that's going to show a rise in lake storage up to about 111,000 acre feet. So there will be a little bit of a blip in this chart. What does that blip mean? Lake storage has dropped by an average of 25,000 acre feet during those years of 2011 to 2015, 21,000 acre feet 2015 to 2016. So if we assume that kind of usage this coming year, then we can assume that around December of 2017, we're going to be back to the lake levels of December 2016. So this means that, if you can recall, all of the panic and the crisis that we had before the rain started, we essentially have delayed that crisis by a year due to the rainfall this year. Something else I'd like to remind you about is that even though that gain in lake water is going to last us, or extend us another year, we still don't have results of the sediment study, and I've been told by Casitas that that report will be made a public document in April. And the reason I want to mention this again is because we're going to find out we have a balance of water sitting in the lake according to the current charts, but if there's 10,000 acre feet of sediment, if there's 20,000 acre feet of sediment in the lake, we'll need to subtract that from the water that's in the lake. So that's still something that we have to find out, is how much sediment is it really in the lake. I made a couple of charts from this, and I wanted to give Jordan Keir credit for them. They're not my charts. These charts that are coming up were taken from his presentation to the OBGMA on 23 February of 2017. So thank you, Jordan. This chart shows the big red dot. If you look down at the bottom, we've had around 25, 26 inches of rain in downtown Ojai, which means that the basin, the Ojai water basin, groundwater basin, has increased eight to 10,000 acre feet. That's how much water we've accumulated in the basin this past winter. So what does that mean to us? This is a really interesting chart, and I know it's busy, but I hope you'll work with me a little bit on here. The top, the top graph is rainfall in downtown Ojai by year. The heavy blue dot is average rainfall. So from about 1994, 1995, or the past 20 years, I'd like you to observe the maximum rainfall numbers, and we're good out to 2017. So back in 95, it started out as over 40 inches of year, of rain, 40 inches of rain that year in Ojai, and then gradually has tapered off. You can see the slope of the line. You can see the rainfall in Ojai in between those high points. So if we look at the trend of the maximum rainfall in Ojai over these past 20 years, the trend is not real good, is not rosy if we assume that kind of trend is going to continue. This last span of 2011 to 2017 obviously were our drought years, and you can see what the rainfall was during that period of time, and of course, you remember what that was. The bottom chart's a little bit more difficult to grasp, but this chart represents the accumulated deviation from average rainfall. Every time rainfall was less than average, it subtracted and made this curve go down. So you can see from 2011 to 2016, this thing was heading toward the cellar. So as of 2016, we were down over 200%. The accumulated deviation from average rainfall was down 200%. What did the rainfall this past year matter? Well, you can see that little jog up at the end of the graph, that's what the rainfall this past year has mattered. So the overall outlook, if things hold true, and who can predict how much it's going to rain next year? No one can, and this year proved that. But obviously, the impact of the rainfall this year on this particular chart is not that great. We all know from Jordan's presentation that well level, water levels have increased. As of 22217, the key well level was up about 40 feet, and that's a good thing. And in his presentation, this particular presentation, Jordan said that because of the slow influx of water to the basin, these water levels are still going to go up in the wells in the basin. We don't know how much yet, and there's a, OBGMA meeting is Thursday, so perhaps we'll get an update then on where we are now. With higher well water levels, perhaps use is going to increase. Perhaps we're going to got more wells coming online drawing from that water. Groundwater extractions in 2012 amounted to 5,310 acre feet out of the basin. If we assume we have an eight to 10,000 acre feet increase in storage this winter, then we may have two years' worth of water that were accumulated in the basin this winter. So that's it. We're in this together. Let's not be too optimistic. The rain was great. I love rain in Ojai. I've always loved rain in Ojai. But let's be wise with our decisions.
Okay. Thank you, Angelo. And that's sort of a good news, bad news kind of a story, you know? Obviously, the good news, we got rain. Better news, we got ourselves an extra year before we start going back into the problem, assuming that past patterns are, you know, an indicator of what we've got to look forward to. But in the meantime, there is a major effort going on to create some plumbing, so to speak, to be able to import in an emergency state water, and that's about a three-year project. So getting an extra year to get that project in place is a really good thing for the valley. So we're optimistic, but we recognize that, one, we aren't, nature's in control, and we got to be careful, so. Okay. Where are we on the agenda? Okay, we're now to public comments. I've got a few cards, and I'm going to ask the public comments to be kept to two minutes in the interest of trying to be sure everybody gets a chance to say something. Steve Paliki? Where's Steve out there? I saw him earlier. Ah, here he comes, yes. Steve, you're up first. I ignored you last time by accident. I apologize.
Quite all right. Thank you, Mayor, city council members, city staff, chief. We've had good news and bad news, and I'm here in a kind of a sad news area. I just want to let you know how disappointed I am in the proceedings at the last city council meeting with regard to leaf blowers. I agree with Mayor Protem Wirick that we should either enforce the rules or change them. I think you made the wrong decision to enforce rather than change and enforce. Member Blatts proposed a reasonable compromise between a complete ban and unlimited use, and we can quibble about the numbers that go with any compromise. That seems to be a widespread habit here in the valley. But the majority of the council would have none of it, no compromise. An uncharitable person might say the council is, or a working majority of the council, shall we say, is listening to the loudest voices in the room and nothing else. You can do better. Thank you.
I think there was a misunderstanding of what the council did, but we'll clear that up later. Okay, Peggy LaSara? And Angelo, is Bandrino on deck? We'll start doing that.
Hi, Mayor Johnston and members of the city council. I also was disappointed with the last city council meeting. At the last meeting, two city council members stated that banning leaf blowers constituted racial discrimination because gardeners are predominantly Mexican-American. If we're going to solve our problems, it's important to be able to appropriately parse their inherent factors and identify those that are critical. It is not racial discrimination to ban leaf blowers. Arguably, it's racial discrimination not to ban leaf blowers because gardeners are differentially affected by the poor effects on health of leaf blowers. And it's racial discrimination to fail to appropriately compensate laborers for their work. If leaf blowers are banned, gardeners should be paid for the additional hours required to do a job by other means. To not do so is to take advantage of individuals who are in a low-power position in our society and are already frightened because of the immigration situation. I don't know what the solution to this problem is, but I think it was very reasonable for Mayor Johnston to suggest that we take an additional three to six months to gather additional information and to look appropriately at this problem. And that it, you know, one of the members of the council on Facebook suggested that the decision was to kick a leaf down the road, and I think that that's reflective of the fact that we're not looking at our problems appropriately. We're not really looking at, they're not linear problems. They're not yes, no problems that can be solved with yes or no answers. They're problems that have to be looked at within the context of a society, and we have to look at the additional problems that any of our decisions create. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Wendy Barker? If I pronounce that right, you're on deck, but Angelo's next up?
You get to sit in the hot seat.
Yeah, there's a chair there for you. Right. Okay.
I'd like to talk about connecting this to state water, and with only two minutes, I'm going to have to cut out my first paragraph, but the first paragraph talked about what we felt about our water crisis this past year, and indeed, it was a crisis. I call it that we had a glimpse of our water Armageddon here in Ojai. Talking about connecting to state water gives the Ojai Valley another source for water. While far from a perfect additional source, it may be more reliable than trusting Mother Nature to keep us alive. Expensive, probably, yes. State water's going to be expensive, but how much would a people pay for water if they had none? I think I'd pay more. So how do we get that state water to Ojai? Ventura is certainly planning for new piping with their capital improvement programs to move water from Saticoy to West Ventura. And this is a quote in their capital improvement program write-ups, quote, "in case Lake Casitas goes dry," end of quote. That's what Ventura is planning. They are proceeding with a scope of work to Kennedy Jinks Consultants to provide the details on how best to make the connection with state water, which will terminate in Saticoy. However, Ventura denied Casitas inclusion of their request for the Kennedy Jinks scope of work to identify additional infrastructure improvements required to supply water to Casitas and determine under what operating conditions the city could supply water to Casitas. Why did Ventura deny that? Further, I've recommended to Casitas general manager that since its initial request of theirs has been denied by Ventura, Casitas should proceed with their own request for, quote, "from Kennedy Jinks." Of course, there would be no expense associated with this request for, quote, "and we would be the, be one step closer to understanding what it's going to take to get state water up the hill to Ojai. The timing is perfect, and Kennedy Jinks is ultimately qualified. Why wait until a true water Armageddon is really upon us in Ojai before any action is taken?" And apparently, no one out there cares as much as a few of us in Ojai do. Thank you.
Thank you, Angelo. Wendy's up, and Ben Turner is in the queue.
I'm Wendy Barker. I'm the director of the Ojai Valley Museum, and I've got good news. I'm here to invite all of you and everybody in the audience to come a week from Saturday on April 8th to Libby Park for the Centennial Jubilee Picnic. It's when we're going to be celebrating 100 years from when the time that we changed our name from Nordoff to Ojai, and when things like the post office tower and the arcade were built. It's a free event. We have over 20 different organizations that are all going to have free activities for you to do at every booth. There's going to be something different. We're going to have animals and music and art and demonstrations. It's going to be just a great fun day. We also encourage everybody to bring a picnic, because that's what it was 100 years ago, it was a picnic. There is, so bring your picnic, bring chairs or a blanket, and dress 1917 style and you'll get a free ribbon. Even a hat does a lot, but we just encourage everybody to come out and celebrate 100 years of this fabulous community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tended to you.
Yeah. The birth of a notion, I think that's there.
I really like that.
Okay. Ben, you're up with Leslie Clark on deck.
Thank you, Mayor Johnston and council members. I'm here, my name is Benjamin Turner, to read a letter to the city from design professionals in your community. We, the undersigned, have come together to ask for your assistance in addressing endemic problems in Ojai's Community Development Department. These problems are affecting the normal processing of planning and development applications in the city. We have all experienced unusually obstructive practices that contravene state law and require cities to respond in a timely manner, and with clear directions sourced from codified laws and policies. While each of us has our own history and frustration with the Community Development Department, we have decided to approach you as a nonpartisan group of property owners, developers, and industry professionals to speak to these problems in general terms without focusing on our individual project-specific complaints. We believe that city staff should be able to offer expert interpretation and implementation of the Ojai Planning Code for the design and implementation of projects within the city of Ojai. However, the Community Development Department has been unable to apply Ojai city codes in a uniform and equitable manner, has continually ignored communications, disregarded the state Streamline Permit Act requirements, and perhaps most concerning of all, has drastically of all, has drastically altered the requirements of our projects months and even years into the project review. The situation has caused us additional expense as our projects are forced to be redesigned after misdirection from staff. This does not even include the unknown number of projects that are abandoned after confusing and frustrating interactions with the city's Community Development Department. The financial loss is felt by individuals, but there is also a loss to the community as potential projects and developers relocate efforts outside the city's grasp. We do not believe the situation ongoing to be resolved within the city's councils' active intervention. Nor the jurisdiction in this area causes architects, engineers, land planning specialists, developers, and contractors such concern. Among our group of people who volunteered their time to help the city after the audit by taking part in the two focus group meetings held by the former city manager, we are professionals in our field, so are disappointed to have seen no change in behavior since the audit and no apparent effort to reengage with us, your customers and fellow residents, in any effort to make the changes that were recommended. Even those of us who have taken our concerns beyond the direct have seen no improvement. It is typically counterproductive to register complaints with the Community Development Department due to the one-off nature of most projects, as well as the well-founded fear of retribution. That said, in speaking among ourselves, we have determined that there is a larger institutional-level failure that needs to be addressed by the city council. We are all proud members of the Ojai's community and seek to work within the codified legal framework. As such, we're asking for a complete review of the Community Development Department and its processes in order to implement a more functional and equitable system. Signed by Ben Turner, myself, land planner; Mike Gilbert, landscape architect; Mark Whitman, architect; Scott Supan, general contractor; Scott Loomis, general contractor; CYC, general contractors; Bill Mellett, landscape architect; Lawrence Nicklin, landscape contractor; Johnny M. Johnson, Jr., general contractor; Wade Ellison, designer; Avina Lestado, designer; Vmionka, developer; Jeff Becker, developer and real estate broker; Bill Ulrich, general contractor; Stephen Glenn, developer; Jack Dyer, business owner; Pat Nolan, designer. Thank you.
Thank you. Like to, is there a copy of that for the? Please, please, no, please.
Mayor Johnston, may I be recognized?
Certainly.
I just want to make it clear that I understand a lot of the concern expressed in this letter. The council has identified this is a problem all the way back to the City Gate Management Audit that listed a lot of these problems. I think it's incumbent upon the council to ask the city manager for a report and a plan of action to address these concerns at the next meeting.
Thank you. Leslie Clark is next up with Garrett Clifford on deck. Garrett, I guess you're up if Leslie's not here yet.
She's coming.
Oh, she's coming?
I'll add that to our future.
Okay.
She's down the block.
She's what?
She's in the, she's in the dark.
Oh, you're in the balcony?
I'm into the light of day.
I'm afraid that she's gonna speak on the agenda item.
I wanted to address the issue of the funding of the Visitors Bureau. Is that?
That's number two.
Okay, so I should come back?
Yeah, all right. Sorry about that. They showed it as a public comment, okay. Garrett? Oh, you, okay. And Summer McComas? Am I pronouncing that correctly?
They'll also be heard.
Oh, all of them? Okay. Okay, I think that's, have we missed anybody under public comment? I think unless they got misfiled. I got a hand waving.
I wanna talk about something that's not on the agenda.
Oh, that's, this is the time. Come on down.
Good evening. Deborah Mo, Ojai. I wanna talk about the dire condition of our streets and the roads around Ojai. They are abominable, and I ride a little scooter, and I've talked to a couple of seniors that ride four-wheel scooters. And the roads are just horrific here. Now, as I was riding to the East End today, I noticed that once you get on the county roads, man, they're sweet. You know, Gorman and out at the East End, they're smooth. They're, they're nice. But I was thinking about the rendering of the picture of Ojai Avenue with the lovely trees in the middle and going down the, you know, redoing downtown Ojai. Well, what about the people that live here? It's not all about right downtown. You know, on our way, the back, Kwiyama, I mean, that road is so beat up, you know, going on the way to the graveyard in front of Matilahaw. I mean, I have a list at home that I was negligent in bringing. But that is my concern. And one of the seniors that I take, helped take care of said, "Whatever happened to the gas tax that used to cover our roads?" Well, maybe it went somewhere like the lottery money or something, you know. Anyway, that's what I wanna say. And there is, I've, I've watched this hole grow at the corner of Ojai Avenue and Maricopa Highway, right there on the corner.
Okay, well, thank you for your comments. We are at that stage. If you'd like to leave your name with the clerk, we'll get back to you.
Yeah, she's got it. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Yeah, right. Be sure to drive carefully on your way home.
So, Mo, Mo, thank you for bringing that to our attention. But I'd like to just add something else to it, and that's the fact that our sidewalks are in worse shape.
Well, I don't know about that.
I'm gonna tell you, you walk, you walk my neighborhood, and I'm gonna tell you, there are.
Oh, I know where yours, the roots and stuff of the trees. Yes, I dog walked down there.
You two guys get together a little later.
Okay, thanks. Well, maybe I'll have coffee.
Mayor, if I could, just real quick, I did wanna touch on, on this term racist. And because I'm the one who used it at the last council meeting. And it just, yeah, thank you. And, you know, I had to think long and hard about that comment and about that, that statement. And Peggy's right. There isn't a need to even use that term in this community 'cause it's just not called for. So I'm gonna accept responsibility for, for myself for making it. And I'm not to explain the content, 'cause it doesn't really matter. It's the fact that it was used and it's, and it was used poorly. So for that, I'd like to say I'm sorry for that. The second thing is, Peggy, I also was the one who said, "Kick the leaf down the road." And I didn't say it on Facebook, 'cause I don't go on that thing. But I did say it in this council chamber, because we have been talking about leaf blowers for a long, long time. And that was my disappointment is, is in the fact that, once again, we're gonna take an issue that we had an opportunity to solve or at least initiate, and we've moved it down the road. And that was my frustration that night, was the fact that we could not come to some type of consensus to move it forward. So again, I don't think kicking the leaf down the road was a bad thing, but I will say again, my sincere apology for using the term racist in this community.
Okay, thank you. And with regard to the kicking, we can't blow the leaf down the road, I guess, depending on, oh, with regard to the ordinance, that was not three to six months. The council's direction was is to not more than six months, and it's gonna be much sooner than that, I would expect, probably within the next six weeks. So, a tough subject, but we will, we will tackle it. We got another one tonight, so we'll put that one on hold. Okay, we've done public communications. I think we are now to the consent calendar.
Mayor Johnston, I'd like to pull item F.
Oh, pardon me, one second. I, I did, thank you. Mr. City Manager, you have an introduction that I think that we've been all waiting to hear.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, very briefly, 'cause I know everybody's waiting. But I wanna take an opportunity to introduce our newest hire, Mr. James Vega. He is our new assistant to the city manager. That's Mr. Vega right there. We're very excited to have Mr. Vega on board. He's joining us from the city of Oxnard, where he spent nine years working in the city manager's office. He has a wide variety of expertise that he's gonna be bringing to the city here. And I'm looking very, looking very much forward to being able to give large chunks of jobs and tasks over to Mr. Vega that have been languishing on my desk. So we are all looking forward to his services. And if you haven't had a chance to stop by and say hello, I would encourage you all to do so. So, James, would you like to take a horse?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council and staff. I'll keep it brief, 'cause I know it's gonna be a long meeting tonight. I am, first of all, really excited about my first meeting. I show up and there is a line out the door and there's a patio full of people.
It's always like this.
It's, it's like a resort out on the patio right now. So it's great weather and everything. But it's, it's exciting to see that level of engagement. I moved to Oakview about six months ago and was working in Oxnard in the city manager's office and basically wondered why I was making that drive every day and leaving the Ojai Valley. And luckily, had an opportunity to come work here. And some of you might have heard a little bit of my background. I previously also was an attorney that practiced civil litigation prior to working for the city of Oxnard. And I'm just thrilled to be here and glad to be a part of the team moving forward.
Okay, welcome, James.
Thank you.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
James, I just, five seconds. I talked to some people I really respect in Oxnard, and you're one of the people they regret seeing go.
Thank you. Thank you. It was a great team there, but I'm really looking forward to working with all of you.
Did you get a list of the other ones?
Yeah.
You heard it here first. Okay. Thanks, James. Okay, our next item is the consent calendar.
I'd like to pull item F, Mayor Johnston.
Okay, we have a request to pull item F, which is the city council minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the rest of the consent calendar?
So moved.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, I guess if there's no objection. Okay.
Councilman, go ahead. Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wirik?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes. Okay, then we'll take item F. Bill, proceed.
Mayor Johnston, I've raised an issue, and I wanted to ask the deputy city clerk for a, a report on how we're going to get and how soon we can expect to get caught up to what is contemplated as standard order of business by Robert's Rules. And, oh, I've seen the city clerk's here. Well, ask the city clerk then. It's generally the best practice, the proper practice, to have the minutes available at the next meeting for approval for, for a number of reasons. And we've been way behind for a long time. And I just, I feel it's a point where it was necessary to specifically ask the city clerk what we can do as a council and asking our legislative administrator to get caught up and get this done where the minutes from the previous meeting are available for approval at the next meeting. That's the goal that we should achieve, in my opinion, and that's what Robert's Rules contemplates.
Thank you, Mayor Johnston and council. First, I think it should be noted that the elected city clerk does not have staff at.
So I asked about what we can do.
You, okay. Staff at City Hall works for and at the direction of the city manager and also reports to him. We share your, the concern that the backlog has created, been created over this last year. And I think Steve can probably relate to some of the things that have gone with staff not here or not, there's vacant seats in, in staff. I met with Gail and Steve this morning, and we've worked out a plan to, a timeframe to complete the last five minutes, sets of minutes, that are on that backlog list. And that, those minutes will be presented to you on May 9th, if not before.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
I move approval.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wirik?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Okay, we're done with that. Now the moment we've all been waiting for, the public hearing. I guess we open the public hearing and then take staff report? Is that the, okay? The public hearing on the proposed, proposal to renew the Ojai Tourism Improvement District for a period of 10 years and increasing the assessment from 1% to 1.5% with the possibility of an additional increase of 2% over the life of the district. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will try to keep my report fairly brief. I, I know, I believe most of the people in the room are fairly aware of the, the topic at hand and some of the issues, so I'm, I'm going to try to focus a bit more in terms of an update, in terms of where we are from where we have been. The, just very briefly, this is a matter for determining whether the city council wishes to renew the Ojai Tourism Improvement District. It is a benefit assessment district proposed to continue funding, marketing, and sales promotion efforts for the Ojai lodging businesses. A couple of things have changed, or a couple of changes were made when the council considered the resolution to, which was the, the resolution of intent, which was adopted back on January 31st. When the council approved city council resolution number 2017-13, the council defined that lodging businesses would only include hotels, inns, beds, and breakfasts, motels, and other commercial establishments of similar nature with current licenses and that are in compliance with all state, local, and federal laws, and that they would not include short-term rentals or vacation rentals located in residential structures or residential areas. So that was built into the resolution of the notice of intent. The, the management plan would be revised if, if approved by city council to reflect this modified definition of a lodging business. The other thing that has occurred since the city council took action on December, on January, excuse me, let me try again, January 31st, was part of that resolution contemplated including county territory in the renewed OTID. And of course, pursuant to that being included, it was dependent on the county of Ventura taking action by the date of this public hearing. As of this date, the city, the county of Ventura has not taken any action to include any of its, any of its territory in the proposed OTID. That action would have been, again, needed to be in hand by tonight's public hearing. So if the council were to go forward and approve this Tourism Improvement District, it would not be able to include the county territory. And my understanding is that the, the item didn't make it to the agenda of the Board of Supervisors, and at this point, it appears to be not going forward. Just a couple, touch on a couple of other points here. Again, the proposal is for an OTID that would generate approximately $460,000. Obviously, if the county area is taken out of that, it would reduce that budgeted amount. And the city council could go forward with a Tourism Improvement District that includes just the city boundaries if it so chooses. The current OTID was established in 2012 for a five-year term, and it expires on October 31st, 2017. The request that was, initially came to the city council and through the, and through the resolution of the notice of intent is for an OTID that is for a 10-year period. But again, the council has full options at this point in terms of whether or not they wish to renew the Tourism Improvement District, the length of the term, the budget. They could also amend the management plan. And obviously, as I stated earlier, if the council does wish to proceed, you would not be able to include any of the county territory in that. I promised I would keep my remarks brief, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions for the city manager at this point? If not, we'll give the first opportunity to the chamber manager, Scott Iger, if you'd like to speak first. I'll let that be his choice.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff, and apparently half of Ojai. The Ojai Valley Chamber of Commerce, as the Owners Association of the Ojai Tourism Improvement District, is here tonight to ask for a final decision on renewing the assessment district that funds the Ojai Visitors Bureau. Over the last five meetings, we have heard many people speak for and against this renewal. And because of these remarks, alterations have been made to our renewal request and therefore our management district plan. I'm going to address a few of the repeated comments that were made in previous council meetings, but first I want to address the issue of civit... but first I want to address the issue of Civitas, which is the consultants, who are the consultants for the T-Bid. Civitas is not a marketing firm. Civitas is a law firm. They do not design T-Bids. They consult with groups that want to make T-Bids. And they consulted with us in 2012, when the previous city manager was here and we spoke to them. They asked what our hotels wanted and then they worked on the T-Bid according to the 1994 law and brought that forward to us for our approval. We made some changes and then approved what they gave us. So they are, they are a firm that we hire on a retainer basis, on a monthly basis. And that's how they work with all the other towns and cities, as far as I know. They do not receive any remuneration other than our retainer. They do not profit from a percentage of anything else, from any of the money or the assessments that the T-Bids make. One of the statements that we've heard quite a bit is that tourism has created gridlock in Ojai. In general, tourists park and walk because they want to see the town. Residents are the weekend traffic as we go from the market to the soccer practice to the hardware store and basketball games at Sarzoti. Tourists do not need to make minor plumbing repairs that require three trips to the hardware store to find the right-sized part. Tourists do not take their children to gymnastics, basketball or soccer practice in Ojai. Those cars and trucks belong to us and this was confirmed in last week's Ojai Valley News. Tourism promotes short-term rentals. The Chamber and Visitors Bureau did not promote short-term rentals in Ojai and this proposed OTID renewal will not promote short-term rentals. STRs increased in the city of Ojai and the surrounding areas because the city of Ojai publicly announced it would not enforce its ordinance against STRs and followed this decision for six years. The Chamber's publicly stated position on STRs was to legalize but strictly regulate them through zoning ordinances with consistent ongoing enforcement. Banning STRs without funded continuous enforcement serves only to drive them underground and allow them to continue to proliferate, which apparently is exactly what's happening now. If the STR ban was strictly enforced, then the 600-plus hotel rooms available within the city limits would be the limiting factor to overnight stays. Ojai is overly dependent upon tourism as a source of operating revenue. The Chamber agrees with this statement and has stated before the council many times that as a city we need to develop other sources of revenue. The city needs to have an economic development department to investigate what other industries might be appropriate for this town. However, until there is another established source of revenue, we must rely on tourism. When and if the city decides to look for those other industries, the Chamber would be happy to be part of that process. The Chamber has altered its request for the OTID renewal. The area map has been reduced to only the city limits of Ojai. No properties within the unincorporated area of the valley are included in the modified MDP. We have cut the renewal term from 10 years to five years. We still need to increase our assessment rate to cover the expenses of maintaining our current tourism efforts in play, to rebuild the reserves and to accommodate the decreased income created by removing the hotels in the unincorporated area. If we work from the December 2016 P&amp;L with an income of $280,000 at a 1% assessment rate, and then we increase that to 1.5%, that would give us roughly $420,000 each year of the new term. We spent $392,000 in 2016, so this increase would allow us to cover a certain level of expense increases and put some money aside for our reserves. Over the five years, we would spend approximately between $2 and $3 million, depending on expense increases. That's a far cry from $7 to $10 million associated with the original 10-year term. Even though we do not know how much our expenses may be increased over the next five years, the Chamber will stipulate to locking the assessment rate at 1.5% per year for the entire term. If there may be some political, physical or financial events that might cause us to want to decrease our expenditures, we ask for the flexibility to lower the assessment rate at no more than a quarter of a percent per year to a minimum of 1% with the consent of council. The process for decreasing the assessment rate is further discussed on page 10 of the management district plan. In addition, the Chamber will offer a voting seat at the Ojai Visitors Bureau's Advisory Committee for the length of the renewal term to someone to be designated by the City Council. Last week, Civitas, at my direction, did send both a clean version and a redlined version of the modified MDP and I forwarded that to council just to be sure that it reached you. And I know that it went to Mr. McCleary's office and I presume that it went to the rest of the council. Any questions at this time?
Are there any questions? Scott, before there was an OTID or a tourist improvement district, how much did the Chamber spend on tourist promotional?
We had a three-year program that was funded wholly by the city at $160,000 a year.
$160,000 a year? Okay. And no money from the Chamber?
Correct.
Okay. Because we're getting a lot of testimony from merchants who are only the incidental beneficiaries of this district based on the occupancy rate in the hotels. And yet they seem to feel strongly that they have a, what word I'm looking for, a stake in this whole thing. And yet it is not intended to be for that specific purpose. It's not precluded. So we have, we have the hotels that are saying that their occupancy rates are not, as I put it, disappointing. They're not at the rate that they would hope for. And you've covered that by acknowledging that there's probably a fairly expansive STR activity going on in the city that must be taking some of the tourists rather than staying in the hotels. But the Chamber doesn't, for all the members that are merchants, there's no program for promoting their business?
We, we, pardon me, we respond to requests for information in our office. If people walk in, or call, or send us and ask us for information on services or things, activities they can do in town, we respond to that. If they want relocation packages, we fill them and mail them to them.
Okay. Well, that's to bring more into town, right, as opposed to promoting the traffic to help the businesses, the marketing?
If someone needs to, wants to come to town and wants to know where they can stay and-
Oh, I see. Okay.
And what they can do in town, I think that's promoting businesses.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
And I also think that it has always been that the weekends are busy and the weekends are pretty much not so busy. The weekdays, pardon me, are not so busy and that's probably why most of the hotels have a 50% occupancy rate.
And for areas like ours, that's fairly typical, is it not?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you. Any other questions?
Could I, very briefly, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, for the, for the benefit of the public, we, staff did receive the Visitors Bureau's request to modify the OTID going forward. We are bound, our staff was bound, really with, to bring forward to City Council this evening what was approved, what was approved in the original Notice of Intent to form the district. So it wasn't that we were opposed to or in favor of, of the proposed revisions that were coming from the Visitors Bureau, but we were bound by law to bring forward to council what had been approved. So-
That's correct. That was the request and that's what is being heard. We can modify it, as you point out. What, is there any relationship between the Chamber and the Visitors Information Office?
You mean at the museum?
Right.
Other than they are members of the Chamber, no?
No, okay.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure that the intent of the motion we made to get to this point, I believe, was to have full flexibility in both the management plan and the terms of the renewal. And I believe all that is simply reiterated tonight by your statement.
Absolutely, that's correct. Let the city attorney chime in as well, if he'd like.
Briefly, thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. The revisions requested by the Chamber to the management plan are within the council's power. However, they were not within staff's power to put on your dais tonight. What was put on your, on the dais tonight is exactly what the council declared the Notice of Intent to consider formation previously, with the sole change now of the county not consenting as of 7:00 tonight. Thus, the county area is dropped out. But you retain the power to approve, reject, modify any of the pieces as you desire.
Our motion included modify to get to this point.
And that modification to delete the short, the short-term rentals was built in as the council had directed.
I mean, modifying the management plan was included in the motion to get to this point.
Yes, and that's within your power tonight as well. You can modify the management plan at will, with the exception of the county is out.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions for Scott?
Um, go ahead, Susan.
And also I wanted to ask, we'll have an opportunity at the end also to ask questions, correct?
Yeah, I assume.
So you mentioned that Civitas is a law firm, not a marketing firm.
Correct.
So who is the marketing firm?
The marketing firm, the PR firm and is Wagstaff Worldwide. And our online marketing firm is Saber Hospitality Solutions.
Now, how many other Southern California cities or in our region hire that marketing firm?
Wagstaff? Is that what you mean, our PR firm?
Yeah, the same.
I have no idea. They are primarily a destination marketing firm, so they have to request from various clients whether or not they can take on another client who may be a conflict. Such as if they were doing the inn and Alice Al wanted to be one of their clients, they would give the first client the opportunity to blackball the other.
So, I mean, I may be very ignorant, but why do you need to retain a law firm on an ongoing basis?
We don't have a law firm retained on an ongoing basis. We pay Civitas only for the work they do on the Ojai Tourism Improvement District renewal. Once this is, once this process is done, then their, our relationship with them is done until we need to-
Okay.
Hire them again for a renewal.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, because I thought you said something about a monthly retainer basis.
They are on a monthly retainer basis through the, through the process.
Through the process, okay. And then you, I thought I heard you say something about the traffic that was confirmed in the Ojai Valley News?
Right. The Ojai Valley News last Friday had an article on traffic in the, in town and their conclusion was that we are the traffic.
Okay. Well, that's, okay. Well, I have some questions about that.
Please.
Okay. That, that's all I have right now. I have other questions, but, well, the other question is why is there not, and this is one of my big questions, but you don't have to necessarily address it now, but at some point it seems very important to address the question why we don't have a very visible, a visible visitor center in the heart of town that's open seven days a week? Because that just seems counterproductive.
That is not our purview. What we, what the hotel brought this group together to do was to be an outbound destination marketing effort.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, that's clear then. Thank you.
Scott? We know, we know that if we tried to do that, we know it would be very expensive because we would want to do it in a particular way and you'd have to have professional people there on seven days a week and it's pretty expensive to do that.
Okay.
Scott, this might be for you or it might be for Matthew. The, the monies that this assessment district bring in, I'm still not clear on, on what they can be used for. There isn't necessarily a set of guidelines that says that, for instance, you could do a traffic study, that you could do an air quality study, that you could clean up Libby Bowl after every one of our concert events as a public service based on the tourists that have attended that event. I'm just not sure what the, what we can ask of you. And maybe Matt or you can clarify what other things that we could actually utilize the monies that you generate for, for the community.
I believe that generally our yardstick is what will promote heads and beds. That is primarily it. Couple of years ago, we, the Libby Bowl Foundation started a concert series and they asked for seed money and we said that's not what we do. However, we'd be happy after we saw, we wanted to see a report and find out what kind of a concert series they were going to promote. And because of the variety of music that they were going to bring to town and the timing of it, we felt that it was a good idea for us to be a sponsor, put our name out there. And it would help bring more people to Libby Bowl and help promote Libby Bowl, which is a keynote location here in town, keynote venue.
So, so I understand your, your perspective of that. Matthew, is there, is there another one?
Yeah, to provide the, my opinion as city attorney, the base rule is set by Proposition 26, which requires that the money raised from this business-based assessment be spent solely on purposes that generate specific business to the specific benefit to the assessed businesses. In this case, the assessed businesses are hotels within the city, not short-term rentals. Therefore, any money spent must provide a specific benefit to those hotels, which would be, quote, heads and beds, would be visitors to the hotels. Any purpose that can be connected back to that goal is a permissible use of the money, a broader purpose of the money, or spending the money to promote the city generally or to promote other non-hotel businesses would unfortunately be beyond the bounds of what is permissible under Prop. 26. And one final point, the money cannot be given to the city.
Okay. I'm going to try to bring some, a little change in direction here. Scott is the applicant, has represented the, the Chamber and the promotional district's position or what they're asking of us. Let's not take it under deliberation at this point until after the, the public weighs in, then we'll take it back to the council. And I assume Scott will hang around to answer questions if the-
But, Mr. Mayor, I would like to articulate a question that many, many people have asked me, if I may.
If it's a question, but not to get into the legalities.
Yeah, okay. So my question is this. We live 90 minutes from one of the largest cities in the world, Los Angeles. And so people are asking me, why is it necessary and why was the decision made to market Ojai worldwide? Or is that true? Or is that just a rumor? Who made the decision to market in, you know, all over the world, China, everywhere?
I'm going to have Veronica step up and respond to that. Okay?
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Veronica Colo, Ojai Visitors Bureau Director, Public Relations and Marketing. A distinct point about which I've been made aware is that there is dissatisfaction in marketing to, quote, "an international audience." This is another fallacy that has apparently snowballed. Let me assure you, as a result of our creative, evocating messaging, evocative messaging, which is resounding to a broad audience, we have become a sought-after destination. We don't go after an international audience. They're coming to us. We're getting calls two, three times a week from a host of international cities. With our relationship with Visit California and Central Coast Tourism, we are specifically geared to marketing to our regional and statewide areas as well as nationally. But in no way, shape or form do we spend any of our marketing dollars marketing internationally.
And how, how do the articles get in, like, Delta Magazine?
That's exactly how. I mean, you, you wouldn't, Delta Magazine, to me, is not an international publication. When that, when that publication comes to us, it's as a, maybe a national one. If they want us to do it to market to Delta in Africa, that's a whole different thing for us. We do not spend any money going to France or to any other, any of those other places.
Okay, just for clarification, you're saying that you don't spend the money, but if they come to you, then you pursue it? Or you, you know, you-
Well, just by very definition, we wouldn't be pursuing it. What we would do is each ask comes in and we assess it individually. And we customize, whatever media visits happen, they are customized to fulfill the request to best present Ojai in the light in which the story angle best represents.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. We have a lot of cards here, so we're going to ask everybody to do two things. One, if you're making original remarks, try to hold it to, we're going to hold you to the two-minute rule. And if you are simply endorsing what has been said before, say ditto or make a very brief statement. And we'll try to get everybody through at a reasonable hour. I've got Eugene Rook with Sabrina Venskus on deck. Oh, okay, come on down. And Sabrina is next. We have a chair up front if you're still in the-
Hi. Do you want me to start?
Yep.
I'm Gene Rook. I live in, with my wife, here in town. You've already addressed the 10-year term of this contract, I think, reducing it to five years, as I understand it. But what struck me is that there's no support in the, in the proposal. It just says everybody else is doing it, other states, other cities. There, there is no support for why you need this district. Now, we just heard that, oh, this is to bring heads and beds into Ojai. And yet nowhere in the, in the- Now, we just heard that, oh, this is to bring heads and beds into Ojai, and yet nowhere in the, in the proposal is a statement as to what change in the vacancy rates in the hotels has occurred over the last five years. There's no justification that, yes, it really does bring more people to the, to the hotels. All it does potentially is bring motor, more motorcycles running through town. If we're a destination, spending is identified as clicks on the internet. It's identified as trips to New York. It's identified as trips to trade shows. Nowhere is there any spending for the benefit of the people in Ojai. We have festivals here. None of this money is going to festivals. None of this money is going to the support of the, of the Libby Bowl. In other words, what this is creating is another unfunded liability for the city of Ojai. And I think you should take that into consideration. Now, there's no rate of return on this proposal. You know, how much money is it going to really bring into the city? There's no, like, no heads and beds number. There's no discussion of what this proposal really means for the city. It's just, hey, give us money, we'll go spend it on trips and internet clicks, and everybody knows something good must happen. That's not the way it works. My guess is, in the term of this contract, there is a big turnover in retail. It's a tough business, restaurants and retail. Many of these restaurants will be out of business before the term of this contract's over, whether it's five years or 10 years. I should note here, there's no description of water savings, which is a big point. And, yes, you have more heads and beds, but you use more water in the, as a result. And there's no, no test on that. The hotels are not required to reduce their water consumption, because now they have fewer vacancies.
Okay, Gene, you have to wrap it up.
All right. Well, the last point I want to make is there is an exception to the spending. The Chamber of Commerce can spend all of this money in legal defense of themselves, and that's an exception in the report and the proposal. And yet, the city can't use any of this money to defend itself in a comparable lawsuit, and I think that should be taken into consideration. I knew lawyers had a hand in this proposal.
Listen, please, both in the interest of time and in respect to all of the speakers, regardless of their point of view, and I believe Mr. Rook would know about lawyers. I think he is one, but, okay. Sabrina is next with John Adair on deck.
And bad timing for me, because I am a lawyer. Sabrina Venskus, I live in Ojai 407 Drown. This, the proposed tax district is essentially a proposal to put the power of taxation in a private entity. It is a, it is fundamentally wrong from a democratic values perspective. It lands us on a slippery slope. As a public interest attorney, I've been personally observing over a period of years a disturbing trend of governments passing laws and policies that undermine our American core democratic values. The California Supreme Court Justice just remarked two days ago in her annual address that the rule of law is being challenged by the federal government. She urged the state of California to, quote, "persevere in our values in times of upheaval." Ironically, the state of California legislatures proposed legislation that would take away local governments' powers to provide local citizens the right to participate in the local land use planning process in their communities. Watch out for SB 35 and AB 1585, folks. You should take notice of that. This is a truly disturbing trend of higher governments sacrificing the means to a certain end, and the end never justifies the means. The, the tax district is fundamentally wrong from the democratic perspective. We should keep power of taxation in the hands of government and not cede it to a private entity such as a Chamber of Commerce or any other marketing firm, and that's what this tax district does. I encourage you to put the kibosh on the structurally incoherent taxation district and guard jealously our fundamental democratic principles of government by the people, for all the people. And I will note that there is a lawsuit currently, right now, going on in San Diego. The class action complaint, which was filed last week, not only seeks to bar the city of San Diego from continuing to levy the same kind of fee, but it also asks for the repayment of funds paid by hotel customers over more than a three-and-a-half-year period. That sum could total well over $100 million. So this type of tax district is being challenged in court right now. I would really encourage you to just put the kibosh on this bad idea. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Please, please, let's give everybody their chance. John Adair is up with Mark Whitman on deck.
Mr. Mayor, before the next speaker speaks, one brief clarification that I think is valuable for the council. On the prior speaker, if the council approves the proposed T-bid at whatever level, and it is challenged in court, the city can tender the claim to the chamber, and the chamber will be required to defend it out of the proceeds of the assessment.
Right.
Thank you.
And probably the other clarification is, I don't believe that it's the chamber. This is a, a special district of which the chamber is helping to coordinate. Okay. John?
Okay, thank you. One, I had, one thing I just wanted to clarify real quick, because it sounded to me like what's before us tonight is still the original plan, the 10-year renewal. No? In other words, the five-year, the, the stuff that's been proposed that Scott mentioned is now...
I'll clarify, the, the request is still the same.
Right.
But the council, when they take it under advisement and make their decision, they can go all the way from granting the request, granting something less than the request, or denying the request.
Okay. Gotcha. I, I just wanted to know where, what Scott had to say. So, I'm, I'm here to speak in, in opposition to the 10-year renewal plan, and I, I guess I would just say this. I think my, my sense of things has been that the, the OTID that has existed since 2012 has actually been very effective, very effective. And I think at this point, there are many of us who feel that now it's time to tap the brakes just a bit on, in, on behalf of the quality of life in, in the city. And I, I just have to respect, respectfully disagree with some of the previous speakers' comments concerning traffic flow, concerning, and, and also I want to point out that, that what the, what the OTID is doing doesn't happen in a vacuum, and as targeted as their, as their marketing initiatives may be, they are in fact driving business to short-term rentals. It, it just is that way. People will read an article in the New York Times, people read an article in wherever they do. Certain generation people tend to make a choice to look for a short-term rental as a lodging first before any kind of other hotel issue. So I know that that's another issue, but it dovetails directly into what we're talking about here. It does, in fact, promote short-term rental business here in, in town. So I would say, my big concern about this plan as it is, is that it is, is that it takes too much of the citizen concerns out of the picture, and gives a little bit too much control to the folks who are admittedly trying to put heads in beds, and doesn't allow us, as a community, to tap the brakes and deal, and mitigate some of the effects.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Please, don't applaud. It was a nice speech, and I will have many more. We'll be here all night if we keep applauding in between. Thank you. Mark, you're up with Meg Goodman on deck.
At our last meeting, we talked about, I proposed a, the question, what, you know, what's going to happen during our next recession or depression to our economy? And the opponent's answer was by saying, well, we need to have a more diverse economy. And I think a diverse economy is a great idea, but what, what is that exactly, and, and why aren't people doing that now? The facts of our current economic situation is that 46% of the valley's population is over 60 years old, and many of them are outliving their money. 11% of our residents, 65 and older, are living in poverty. 20% of the population live below the poverty level compared to 11% of the rest of the county. 22% of Ojai Valley children are living in poverty, up from 18% last year. The city of Ojai is the third lowest per capita income in the county, barely ahead of Fillmore, Santa Paula for last. These statistics are from the Help of Ojai's annual report. Help of Ojai is part of our caring and giving community that is the soul of Ojai. They are doing a great job trying to help the people of this valley. The tourist economy is the core of this city's economy's fabric that supports the people and organizations, which is who we are. We are seeing threads of this economy, this economic fabric being torn out, with the banning of the STRs and now this. How many more threads can be removed before it becomes unraveled? So let's not kill this cow before we have, until we have another cow to replace it. We are, we are hearing some unhappy people. I, I know my time is getting up, and my speech is long. We are hearing some unhappy people here in the community about this situation, and some are complaining about traffic, but, and then some are complaining about the good old days. But I say, you know, what we should be debating here is really how, you know, we're going to change as a community in the future, and what is our collective vision of this community? For instance, what do we envision for, for, for Ojai, for the old Ojai Elementary Campus or the Arts Center? How about a community swimming pool? And let's say, and I say, let's tolerate our visitors who have come to, to see what Libby has built, but let's not tear down what we have built. But let's build into something better. Let's not let fear drive our decisions, but let's express our soul or uniqueness. Let's join with groups like the Help of Ojai that make a difference in this valley. Perhaps through our example, we can make a difference in the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Yeah, it would be a lot of applause, you know, both sides. Okay. Meg Goodman is next up.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Meg Goodman, 304 North Montgomery Street. I just want to say that I'm in favor of renewing the tourist district tax, and I just want people to be aware, it's not a tax on the community. It's a tax on the tourists that come here to enjoy our community. And without the tourists, you know, Ojai really is a three-legged stool, our economy. It's based on tourism, education, and agriculture, and tourism is about 50% of it. And it provides a lot of jobs, and, you know, they're not high-paying jobs, but the, Ojai is a retirement community. You need service jobs, but there's also jobs that are created here by the medical, well, in fact, because Ojai was a, a resort, I mean, a tourist, it's built on tourism. It started out with people coming here from the East Coast, probably including Libby, to help cure their tuberculosis, and they'd come here to Wheeler Hot Springs. It's also what created the birth of the AARP here, and the Gables is the first retirement home ever built in the United States. And that is what we should be working towards, is more, you know, inclusion for seniors and people that are aging out of their lives. Ojai is a wonderful place to retire. It's not going to be a hotbed of manufacturing. That's not what we want. We don't want to have a bunch of, you know, factories here. I mean, I understand we need jobs, but we have good jobs in the private schools, the hospitals, the convalescent care centers. I mean, there's a lot of good jobs. Tourism creates jobs that are really good for kids that are in high school and getting out of high school before they go to college, you know, waitressing, busboys, caddies, you know, golf attendants, all that. It's, we need tourists. We need people to come and visit and enjoy our valley. They're not all going to move here, thank God, but everywhere is getting more crowded. We're 90 miles from Los Angeles. You know, you're going to always have more traffic than you want, so maybe start an electric car dealership. And that's the other thing. The, you know, these, we need money to help pay for our roads, and we need to, as a community, buy gas in town, because if we go outside the city limits, that revenue goes to the county. That's why their roads are better. Unfortunately, we have to support the gas stations that are here in order to generate any gas money. So, anyway.
Well, thank you, Meg.
Appreciate it.
Okay, Kathy Brazemley. Is there, is Kathy here? And I've got another card here. Barb, is it Rubo or Rub, Rubo? You'll be next up. In fact, you may, you know, you may take. Thank you.
Before I can begin, I'd like to just make a procedural comment here. I was the second person in the room tonight, and I'm just wondering why just now my card is being pulled to speak.
Well, that, where it has not been a first-come, first-serve, I've got a hole.
And I believe you were the first person here tonight. So, you know, maybe something could be done about that.
Okay, that's a good suggestion. Well, let's see if we can number them as they come in. Okay?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the city of Ojai for providing the opportunity for the citizens to give some input on the future of tourism promotion in our wonderful valley. We, my husband and I, have visited Ojai since the late 1960s and lived here full-time for the last 30 years. Over these past years, there has been increased traffic and a different vibe as it has filled with tourists on weekends. We live in Ojai's east end and try to avoid driving to town on weekends, because when there is a special event going on, because of the increase in traffic. Apparently, there's been a report that, that traffic is all us. I don't agree with that, because you can just experience what's going on when there's a festival or a tournament in town. And it's not just downtown traffic. We also have it in our east-end neighborhood due to a proliferation of short-term rentals, which has brought increased traffic and noise to our neighborhood. Everyone who knows us knows how much we love Ojai and have fought to protect it over the years. The things that make Ojai so special to us are the scenery, the interesting people, the agriculture, and the cultural events. I believe that people will continue to visit our community, because they also want to experience these attributes. The word is out, we don't need tour buses unloading behind the arcade, but this is where we are headed if we don't slow down the tourism advertising. I would encourage some of the touristy stores along the arcade to consider shifting some of their offerings to meet the needs of local folks. We need a stationary store, for instance. We who live here support local businesses that provide things we want and need. We want to support you, and we will. Let's work together to keep Ojai a place where our children and their children will want to live, and tourists will want to visit. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, Barb, you're up with, is there, is it Delaney? Dulaney Labar? Okay. I got clothes.
My name's Barb Rugo. I'll be brief. I'm just guessing that nobody, or that everybody probably in this room has been a tourist at some time, and I think that we're losing sight of that, that we all like to be tourists when we go somewhere else, and it seems sort of hypocritical to me that we don't welcome people into our community as tourists. I came here first as a tourist to, to buy a home and to become a resident. Consequently, our children come here to visit us, so I guess they're considered tourists now. Again, that seems sort of hypocritical that we wouldn't welcome our adult children, family members, who are coming here as tourists. Not in this community, but I don't have a dog in the fight in terms of having a business here, but in, where I lived previously, I had a tourist business for 18 years, and I can't imagine a, a better business to be in. I never had a... Tourists are happy people generally. They're on vacation. It's a clean business. It's, they spend money. I, I'm quite amazed that this is going on actually here, because, you know, can anybody raise their hand that hasn't traveled and been a tourist and hasn't enjoyed themselves? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I, may I respond, since that's such a typical, may I respond for a moment? Okay. There does seem to be a misunderstanding that those of us who are questioning the need for the continuation of the Tourism Improvement District, that we're somehow anti-tourism. Nothing could be further from the truth. The truth is that the best...
Let's not debate it with them, but we can say that, yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Preserving our town is the best thing we can do for tourism.
Okay, Lisa Dare on, Lisa, please. Lisa Dare on deck.
Good evening. Delaney Labar, 206 South Blanche. Our mother, Shirley Labar, died last week after three brutal months, bones shattered and bedridden after being struck by a motorcycling tourist on December 10th. So we have a very personal connection to the subjects of tourism and traffic safety. You can imagine how happy she was to see her last headline in the Ojai Valley News, which said that more crosswalk lights are in Ojai's future. She felt that some good would come from her horrible accident, only to feel enraged when we read two paragraphs further in, that Mr. Grant doesn't consider the flashing crosswalk lights, quote, "necessary in downtown where traffic..." lights, quote, "necessary in downtown where traffic is slower," unquote. It is precisely because traffic is so heavy in the downtown that we need these lights. Blanche Street is a very busy cross street. There is Westridge Market and the Bank of America. Help of Ojai and City Hall are at the end of the block. We have walkers, bicyclists from the end, disabled kids from ARC, old people on electric scooters, teenage drivers, motorcycle caravans, and tourist drivers looking around with, who are unfamiliar with our street patterns. We need crosswalk lights and a stop sign on Blanche and probably several other streets. So before you advertise for more tourists, and I like tourists, I like to tour some other places, in moderation. So before you advertise for any more tourists, you better make sure the streets are safe for them because they are not. Our mother's accident is but one case. I personally know three people who have died in Ojai Avenue crosswalks. So since Shirley's accident, every single person I have told about her story has their own personal stories of near misses in the crosswalks. We are adamantly opposed to extending this contract for 10 years. Frankly, you could stop right now and you'd still have tourism increasing every year because the, every tourist who's come has told people, every, you know, Airbnb has had hundreds of hits, all the magazine articles, which I've seen a plethora of as I've traveled around the country about Ojai, those are being saved in their travel files to come here. So tourism grows exponentially, and there's a tipping point, and then it's a runaway train. So, and the, and the living experience in Ojai is shifting is palpable. So I'm not saying shut the gate. Moderate tourism is welcomed, and it's an economic mainstay for this town. I understand that, but please do not extend this for 10 years. Maybe consider two years and reassess, see what we're doing, see how our numbers are, and let's get the lights in all of our downtown crosswalks. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I'm very sorry for the loss of your mother.
Thank you.
Right. Okay. Next, Lisa?
Mm-hmm.
And is there Stacy Jones out there? Come on down. You're on deck.
Okay. I'm opposed to renewing the OTID for a couple of reasons. One, I'm really concerned about an autonomous unelected group making decisions that are going to have profound, long-term effects on Ojai. We have no participation in that process. I, I'm also worried about the influx of tourists, and I agree with what the previous speaker just said about the cumulative effects of the spending that we've already done. I don't have an issue with tourists in general. I've lived here for 18 years and haven't really felt an issue with this until the past few years. I have an, I have a problem with an influx of large amounts of tourists. So hopefully, you will consider maybe a shorter term or not even renewing it at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Kathleen Richards on deck.
Dear Mayor Johnson, Mayor Pro-Ten Wyret, Council members and staff, I'm Stacy Jones and have lived in Ojai since 1985. I'm raising my children here and is a single mother hoping to one day purchase a home again. My husband and I began our coffee house in 1995 on the main drag and began what has become a beloved business in town. Our family grew within the next few years as our business grew. We owned a home, raised our children, and sadly sold when our relationship changed. It's difficult to speak about the pending OTID without speaking about the effects of STRs. They still exist and still proliferate, leaving empty homes that I, I and many of us seeking rentals cannot afford. Homes that could be solid space for local families who have lived here for generations and wish to continue their legacy but now cannot touch. I do not oppose tourism in Ojai. Many of us began that way. I uprooted my life, moved here, I worked here, contribute for the betterment of my community, which is best for my family. I invest in my community by volunteering, donating time, money, in a myriad of ways. My kids have gone through the schools here, and you bet I am one of those parents who make time to help when I, when and where I can. Tourists do not participate in much, if not all, of this. A variety of pay, blah. You are looking to allow a great deal of money to be spent to attract more tourists. I can only shake my head and ask why with all we have been saying and struggling with our requests to put a strict regulation on vacation rentals, all the towns and the media who have been hurting from their slice of life being taken away to accommodate tourists and to push away and out and push out the locals. Tourists want to know what there is to do here. As an avid hiker, there's a nature abounding. Go there, walk around, visit the local shops, enjoy our restaurants, buy a local ticket for a play. Tourists do not know about our local benefits for people in dire need of help, families touched by disharmony, organizations who benefit from our participation and donations for their existence that ultimately do good things for all of us. Naturally, we attract more tourists, and your thoughts of even more over the next several years? I hear locals, customers, saying that they will likely move or simply avoid coming to shop in town, that their children will not ever be able to stay here. What exactly are we advertising tourists to come do, see, experience, more than the obvious? We are a serene place with beautiful landscape and a home for many. The division of our community is painful. I cannot speak for other establishments and what they offer our community, but I see flyers in shop windows, I see names of businesses on programs.
I'm obliged to tell you to wind up.
Wind up, local newspapers, blah, blah, blah. I respectfully request you seek a different way to invest in our community. You already have spent significant time and resources on whether to allow a very narrow group to benefit from our, from this OTID proposal, but you are elected officials and are supposed to look out for all of us. Please do that. Please help us keep Ojai the place where the community thrives as a whole. That is the key to success for keeping Ojai the place where the tourists will come and our businesses will prosper. As a business owner, I would not consider purchasing this PR firm's proposal. It's not good for my business in the long run because it drives away the local support for my business and will hurt the community in which my business succeeds. If I was a business owner, wouldn't buy it. If I was a business, if as a business owner I wouldn't buy it, then would you?
Time's up. Thank you. Kathleen Richards, and next up is Julia Whitman.
I'm Kathleen Richards. I've lived in Ojai for 20 years. I am opposed to extending the OTID at all. I think that there's so much information that they've already disseminated that it'll be on the internet for the rest of our lives, and we don't need to pay any more money to generate more interest. Also, when Scott says that we are the traffic, and the newspaper says we are the traffic, absolutely not. I eat breakfast every morning, every Sunday morning at Sea Fresh, and I get to see what's driving by, and it's seven Lamborghinis, followed by 35 motorcycles, followed by a string of classic cars. This is not citizens of Ojai driving through town. This is tourism. When the OTID advertises this town with their goal of getting heads in beds, they can't limit their advertising to people who are interested in sleeping here. They're advertising to the whole world. So everybody's coming and contributing to whatever gridlock or other water issues or whatever the problem is that comes with too many people coming through here. So I don't think we need this anymore. Another little piece of information, I, I've been following the council for the whole 20 years that I've lived here. And I remember when we had a Visitors Bureau that was funded by the council and run by the Chamber of Commerce. And every year, there was an argument at council about how much money would be given to the chamber to run the Visitors Bureau. But the Visitors Bureau's purpose was to provide information for people who got here and wanted to know what there was to do here. They didn't, like, go out to the whole world and try to put a big drag net and bring them all here. It was, once, once they're here, we'll help them find things to do. Well, the OTID came along because the chamber didn't want to have to come to the council every year and fund that Visitors Bureau. So now they're doing the heads-in-beds thing, and I don't think it's working for the town, and I would not want you to renew it. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Julia, with Stephanie O'Neil on deck.
Hello, I'm Julia Whitman, as you all know. My husband Mark and I have been lifelong residents here. We built our home here, raised our children here, and built our businesses here. I am here again to ask that you, the council, support the OTID. Speaking both as a lifelong resident and a longtime business owner who employs more than two dozen people, I beg of you to give your support to the one, and at this point, the only truly sustaining economy of this community. Over the past weeks during these meetings and hearings, I've heard a lot of talk about how the focus of Ojai should be to develop an alternative economy to replace tourism. This makes me think back to the time when we opened, first opened the Blue and the Emerald Iguana Inns. In those early years, our midweek business came almost entirely from a few local, very successful companies. VST, Lynda.com, the David Allen Group, all brought many clients and teachers from all over who filled our midweek hotel rooms and supported local businesses. They were the bread and butter of our Sunday-through-Thursday businesses, business for many years, as then the tourists did not come during the midweek. Sadly, all of those companies have now left Ojai. They were the alternative economies that many now say we so need. They were created and operated by local residents who cared deeply about the Ojai community. Sadly, it turned out Ojai wasn't a business-friendly community. None of these companies could sustain long-term growth if they stayed based here, so they've all left. Other companies like Gina and her Gypsy Tea, or Bill Moses and Cavita, have also tried to keep their companies in Ojai, but as their businesses expanded, they too found it impossible to stay. Thus, it has been proven that Ojai is not now a business-friendly city. So until it finds a way to become one, it must not turn its back on the one successful and relatively low-impact economy that we have in place in favor of some elusive and not, something yet not in existence. If the council does not support us now in supporting tourism for the future, and the tourist base falls back to what it was 10 or 15 years ago, or another recession comes, and since we now have no alternative economy in place as those previously successful companies have gone, this town will turn into a midweek ghost town, and again, our businesses will fail and our economy will be impoverished. It is your job as the city community leaders to ensure this does not happen. Please support the OTID.
Thank you. Stephanie O'Neil with Trent Jones on deck.
Hi, I'm Stephanie. I don't own a business here in town. I'm a professional woman who owns a home here, and my grandparents moved here back in the 1940s, so I've been coming here all my life. And I've seen this town, I've loved it ever since I have a memory of anything. And the beauty of this town and everything that it offers us and tourists is something that is being supported, I think, through tourism. I know there is issues with traffic. That just happens all the time when you have any kind of tourist population, but I am one of those people who's driving the store three and four times through town. I ride my horse through town, I deal with the traffic. The tourists are the ones who drive by slowly, and they're really sweet, you know, and a lot of the locals are too. But, but I think that we are, tourism is so very important to us. It brings in tax dollars, it helps pay for these roads that we need. Yes, we need crosswalks with lights, we need, you know, things like that to keep everybody safe. It's not just tourists who hit people, it's people in this town who do too. Kids on cellphones, adults on cellphones as they're looking down while we're going through crosswalks. Those are a bunch of issues that are very important, but I don't understand how they pertain to the tourism issue. We need the tourist dollars. I'm thrilled to have restaurants to go to in this town. I'm thrilled to support the local businesses when I can, but I don't see a lot of locals supporting the local businesses, you know, during the week like the tourists do. So we need the tourist dollars. I don't want any more dilapidated buildings and brownfields like we've had for so many years before the tourism, you know, bumped up. Thank you.
Okay, Trent Jones.
Hello. My name is Trent Jones. I live here in Ojai.
Olga Jones out there?
Yes.
Come on down here in the next-
Better half. Anyway, I, I've been here, we moved to the Ojai Valley in 1999, and I've run a real estate business here since then, but before that, I've been in business for 35 years selling real estate. And I will say firsthand that if you don't advertise, you don't have business. It's the key to my business. If I stop advertising tomorrow, my business will die. I spend over $2,500 a month advertising. It pays off. It pays off. It brings people here. And so it's very important, and I do support 100% renewing this for the maximum amount of time, 10 years, because I 100% believe in our tourist economy, 100%. That's my comments. Oh, and I love Ojai just the way it is and just the way it's not.
Okay, we'll get over that. Olga Jones.
Mayor, council members, and staff, I've been in the financial services business in Ojai for 18 years. I work with several mom-and-pop small businesses. I've watched them suffer through the recession, and I help them through the ups and downs. And I will tell you that the Visitors Bureau has made a difference to many of these businesses here in town. Some of them have been featured in some of these articles that have been put out there they would never have been able to afford to do something like that on their own to get that type of recognition. There are those that are dependent on making their living in Ojai in order to live in Ojai, and I think that that's what this is all about. Also, there are those that live in Ojai that sorely need affordable housing and in order to stay in Ojai. And some of them are the artists that define our town. And I, and I'm requesting that the money that is generated through the Visitors Bureau, and there will be monies generated if we proceed with this, I, I request that some of that money go towards subsidizing affordable housing in Ojai. Thank you.
Wait, 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 wait. Let's clear up that point.
What?
Do it later.
Oh, okay, we're gonna, we'll clear it up later? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Bill Miley. And Carolyn Von Driscoll on deck.
For the record, I am Bill Miley. My family has lived here since 1968. I came here for a job in public health and settled in Ojai to raise a family. We didn't come here as tourists. Yes, Ojai needs a tourist sector, sector. The Ojai Valley Inn has sustained our city for years. Currently, our city gets approximately 33% of its general fund budget from transit, occupancy, or bed tax. The average small city gets, California city gets 17%. The 2012 recession caused economic havoc for everyone, most everyone, and did damage to tourism all over, especially here. We were down to 22%, and our budget was in trouble. Tourism improvement districts are relatively new form of government created, which government created for economic promotion programs. Each year, TIDs create a plan, they spend their money, and they hope it works. The one measure most used as proof is an increase in the TOT revenues for the cities and counties. That's what's used here. The bigger cities like San Francisco and San Diego measure the results by collecting data. In San Francisco, they know that service workers in hotels make an average of $33,000, folks, how much they make here, probably not much more. I have been told that about two-thirds of the total TOT tax comes from the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa. Last year's total TOT was $3 million, with $2 million from the inn. The inn has a very active and expansive marketing program for guests, conventions, groups. They employ five to six full-time professional folks, full-time. How much the remaining $1 million is generated by the Visitors Bureau? We don't know, and they don't know. So it's time to collect facts. No more scattershot marketing efforts hoping tourists will come here and rent a room. Midweek stays have to be promoted. They're full on the weekends, and they are not full, they're not. So they need to collect data. If they don't agree to collect data to show what they do, they shouldn't get renewed. By having our council add an evaluation section, give them a chance. In conclusion, I support a two-year extension at 1% with a formal evaluation section added to the plan. And after two years, or during the two years, consider a longer renewal if it's warranted. Ojai's destiny is at risk. We need to be conservative, and we need to keep tourism promotion under control. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Carolyn with Stacy Jones on deck.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Staff Chief. Your decision tonight will fundamentally impact the future of our community. In all of the discussions around this critical issue, I have yet to hear anyone speak out in opposition to tourism. I think we can all agree that it plays a role in Ojai, and our visitors are welcome here. The issue, though, is balance. The question is who should be responsible to maintain the balance so that our community remains a place where we all want to live and that visitors want to come? I have spent a- I have spent a lot of time thinking about the impact that millions of dollars spent on the worldwide marketing of Ojai as a commodity will have on our community, but then I realized that I can't even reach the substantive analysis of that question, because I keep struggling with the fact that this proposal asks you, our elected leaders, to relinquish the power we voters vested in you. You are our elected leaders, empowered and expected to ascertain and prioritize what best serves our community as a whole. You are asked, and frankly, it seems expected, to relinquish your power to control an economic base of our community, including all of its potential negative impacts. You have been asked to relinquish your power to those over whom we voters have absolutely no control. You are asked to relinquish control under a proposal that does not prioritize the general public or local businesses as a whole. Indeed, the proposal states that this marketing plan is, and I quote, "intended only to provide benefits and services directly to those businesses paying the assessment. These services are tailored not to serve the general public or businesses in general." If you agree to this proposal, or any variation thereof, you will have approved something that, by its own admission, does not serve the general public, your constituents. You, as our leaders, should maintain the control we voters vested in you to oversee the economic, environmental health of our community. Please do not relinquish that control. Ojai needs and expects you to be at the helm going forward. Let the OTID lapse and keep the power and responsibility where it belongs with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy fingers are welcome, applause no, okay? Thank you.
I would appreciate no happy fingers, too.
Okay, we have one vote against happy fingers. Okay. Stacy Jones is up?
She spoke.
Oh, she spoke, I'm sorry. I was thinking we were keeping up with the Joneses, we have a lot of them. Vicki Byrne with, is it Richard Tell? Is that correct, on deck?
I've been asked to be a stunt double for Jerry Camrio Dunn, who's ill and couldn't be here tonight, so you just have to imagine that I'm six foot seven and have a deep voice. As a travel journalist for National Geographic, I've visited some wonderful small towns over the years, sadly, many of them ruined by runaway tourism. Council members, don't your instincts warn you of similar danger to the small town we all cherish? Do you feel a pang downtown on weekends when you don't recognize a single familiar friendly face on the street? Do you wonder what's causing the parking problems and traffic congestion? Simple logic would tell you, when tourists come to town, they add to the traffic unless they rode in on mules. Why this troubling, why these troubling new problems? Because Ojai has been fluffed and folded and packaged as a product, no longer a community but a commodity, to sell in magazine ads, travel articles, and pitches to meeting planners. And who's behind it? The Ojai Tourism Improvement District, and by extension, council members Blatts, Haney, and Wirick, who have voted to move the OTID forward rather than join their colleagues to end it. Let's be clear, the argument here is not, let's do away with tourism, the argument is, let's not permanently ruin our town by overdoing tourism. I think we've already gone too far, but the OTID has a single purpose, to increase tourism further. Next January, their marketing/fund rises to $750,000 a year, actually, that's, we'll skip that because it's changed now. The Visitors Bureau may not be objective about this because the OTID writes their paychecks, and it's easy to understand support from people who directly benefit from this marketing blitz. Hotel owners who don't pay a dime of their own money, legal and illegal short-term rental owners who get the spillover, downtown shops and businesses. For anyone with a financial interest, it's a free ride on the gravy train. The train brings in lots of visitors to spend money, but here's what I've learned as a travel writer. In a tourist town, money takes over. Eventually, visitors are not seen as guests but as walking wallets. We've already started to morph into a tourist town, though, and now OTID wants tens and ten years and millions of dollars to finish the job. The city council will be powerless to get rid of a renewed OTID, no matter how dire its effects. Why would the council make itself helpless and irrelevant? Why give a private, unelected group such formidable power over everyone who lives in Ojai? Please, don't let the so-called Tourism Improvement District improve Ojai to death. Let the OTID lapse.
Richard Tell with Shirley Denny, I think it's Denny.
I've been correct. Hi, I'm Richard Tell, and after following all these eloquent people, I feel like totally unprepared to speak to you guys, but it's basically, for me, it's common sense. I was gonna come here and tell you, there's a drought going on, seven years, we've had one year, of rain, and all these people coming into Ojai, are they not gonna flush when they go to the bathroom? Are they not gonna shower? Are they not gonna drink water? Are they not gonna cause fires, or whatever it is? This is just common sense. We're in a, excuse me, a drought, not an F-drought. And so, that just doesn't make any sense to me, what's going on. The traffic problem has been outrageous. You can't find a parking spot during the week. I have people telling me that all the time. I don't know where anybody else is. You can't find parking. The one thing that they will help us to do, these new tourists that come in as a result of this board decision, if it's made, is that, right now, we enjoy the infamy of being the second worst air quality in Ventura County. The second. Check the Ventura County Air Quality Board. We're the second worst, behind, I think, Simi Valley. How is it possible that this can be, that you can consider bringing more people into town and taking it up to number one? I'm done on that. The last part is this. I think all of this can be just thrown out the window. We don't have to have to do anything if you guys would just enforce the short-term rental ban. Everybody knows it's happening. There's a woman in the room who's keeping track of all the proliferated private ones that are still going on, laughing at you guys, and they're going, what do we care? And they're not gonna be doing anything to us, we're gonna keep doing it. So, if we could put some teeth into that and get that out of here, it won't take it all away, but it's sure gonna help. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Shirley, is it Denny, if I'm reading the printing, or is it Penny? Shirley? Denny, okay, okay, here she comes. And Wesley Ferraro on deck?
I'm gonna take my card out now, because I come up later. So, her and then whoever else is...
Oh, okay. Okay, I'll put you aside here for a moment. Is there a Sher...
Come on, Shirley.
Come on, Shirley. Right to the mic.
Okay, I don't have to tell you, I'm Shirley Denny. I'm here to read a letter from Jerry Sokomak, who was unable to be here tonight, and his stance is that he's opposing the continuation of the Tourism District. So, these are his words, okay? There are two issues here that are inextricably intertwined, the Tourism District and the short-term rentals, folks. I say this because we have hotelers here in Ojai who are also participating in the short-term rental market. That being the case, they should have no complaint about empty bids in local hotels and motels. They are creating their own competition. This small group of businessmen are elbowing, his words, are elbowing everybody out of the way to get to the public trough, and at the same time, driving up rents and other prices, you know, whatever the market will bear, tourism. They want to increase the tourist burden but not improve the streets the tourists and we all drive on. They have no plan to mitigate the degrading air quality that comes with increased traffic, and when taxpayers ask for some restraint rather than unregulated growth of their special interests, they scream, "We are destroying tourism." Most of us receive little benefit, only the burden of the tourist industry.
Sharon Smith, followed by, is it Hallie Katz, or Haley? Yeah. Oh, she did, okay. Sharon left?
Yeah.
Okay, so, Hallie, followed by Julie Wellings?
Good evening. I'm Hallie Katz, owner of Human Arts Gallery in the Arcade, 246 East Ojai Avenue. Our shop has been in the Arcade since 1975. This issue of renewal of the OTID has created a rift in our community that has been unsettling, to say the least. I think there is a lot of anger, and much of it has been directed at downtown businesses that rely on tourism. This is just a little survey of my life, I believe, and there's so many good comments that have been made on both sides, I feel like I want to respond to each and every one of them. But there are residents who simply refuse to shop in Ojai for a variety of reasons, and perhaps because of two longstanding misconceptions. They think that merchants are catering only to the tourists, and, number two, they think we're getting rich in doing so. Well, I'm here to tell you that neither are true. In our shop, which is one of the biggest spaces available in the middle of the Arcade, the rent is high and overhead is going up all the time. We have to make a concerted effort to have goods that are affordable to all, handmade, unique, functional items and furniture for the home, gifts and jewelry in every price range. And the reason I say that is because I think 90% of the people in this room have never walked into my store. I feel it very personally, that you talk about shopping in Ojai and wanting to support local business, but you don't do it. We make it a great experience in our store for every person that walks in the door, a local person or a visitor from out of town, even if they only buy a $3.50 greeting card. We offer to get special items for them if we don't have what they are looking for. We do what we do because we love it. If we were getting rich, I can assure you, we would not be working 12-hour days. We would have a manager, drive newer cars, and take vacations. People say they would like our downtown stores to sell everyday goods and services, but the rent and overhead in general is very high. It would be too difficult for a five-and-dime, a stationery store, or a family shoe store to make enough money. It's hard enough for our existing businesses. The expense of having a business here today cannot be rolled back to the way it was in the 80s. It is not enough to rely on local patronage exclusively. We must have tourism, and I believe that the OTID is a very good way to organize that. They allow us to have our voice, which we could not do by ourselves. Thank you.
Julie Wellings, followed by Richard Kait.
Yes, I'm Julie Wellings, and I own two businesses in Ojai. One's over arts and the Arcade, and the other's Ojai Pottery and Clay School. And I can just say ditto to everything that Hallie has said. I do support the OTID and hope that you all will too. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Richard? Is Richard still around? Okay, well, Carol Wensel, is that right? Okay, Randy, you get to try to figure that one out. Doug LeBarre?
Let me see.
Ben, is it Ben?
Doug LeBarre. It's no mystery why Ojai holds such a compelling appeal to tourism. I've been doing a project in LA the last three weeks, and I've been keenly reminded of how appalling the experience of spending time in LA traffic can be. The unrelenting competition of freeway driving, the overcrowding, the lack of calming effects of nature. I moved here to Ojai in '74 to escape the madness. I know our commercial sector is tourist-based, but I miss the loss of businesses that cater to locals. So, I feel that we have approached the point of saturation in the area of tourism, and until we adjust some very important infrastructure issues, the safety of our roads, the speed of Highway 150 through downtown, and the condition of our streets, we need a pause in the marketing of Ojai. I have a question, what percentage of the 40,000 citizens that live in this valley are dependent on tourism?
Thank you. Okay, Stan Katz, and is there, is it Brant Alcroft? Is that name? Okay, stands up, Brant's on deck.
Hi, my name is Stan Katz. As you heard from my wife, we own Human Arts Gallery in the Arcade. We've been there 42 years, 246 East Ojai Avenue. Tourism is essential to our business, as it always has been. About a third of our business is local, and though we're very grateful for that, it's not enough to survive. In order to keep our gallery open, pay our employees taxes, overhead, and sustain our modest lifestyle, we depend on tourism. In 2008, 2009, 2010, we hung on for dear life, like a lot of other small businesses do. And when the Visitors Bureau began five years ago, we saw as a much-needed way to make current information available to people outside of this community and experience Ojai as a meaningful getaway. In time, with effective website, visiting journalists, we've seen a great improvement in new customers coming in the door, which ultimately should translate to better sales. However, we have seen a downturn since short-term rentals have been banned from the city. We've always had a core group of regional and local repeat customers, but we have a huge shift in retail due to an aging demographic at this point. It's more of a challenge now to reach out to young people, they're more accustomed to buying goods on the internet. Here is something we've observed for a long time, our older collectors and local patrons who come in every music festival for 25 or 30 years are now downsizing, divesting themselves of acquisitions, are simply not coming into the event. We see a dwindling fan base of visitors, older ones especially, who love us. They come in to chat, but not necessarily to purchase anything. And that's fine, but we don't see many of them in town now like we have in the past. We need to reach a younger demographic, and these are people that love, they're art lovers, they support Ojai in the events, the shops, the restaurants, and so forth. The Visitors Bureau is helpful immensely with the ability to promote Ojai to that audience. The Visitors Bureau gives us the opportunity to promote ourselves through the website and the PR. It's all-inclusive of every merchant, hotel, restaurant in Ojai. Please renew the Visitors Bureau funding for a minimum of five years with a 1.5% assessment rate. Thank you.
Thank you. Brant? And Barbara Snyder on deck?
I'm a newbie, because I've only actually been in my house for a few months, and so I have to be very careful. The first thing is the reaction about the stores. I actually, I don't buy much now, but I find, I do go to the stores on the avenue, and I think they are amongst the best collection of eclectic, interesting collection of stores that I have found anywhere in the world. So, I certainly support them. There are one or two that I don't go into, because I think that they are just for tourists, but the majority know, and I've made my first friends with store owners. So, excuse me. Having said that, my concern comes with a little, very short story. A few months ago, this year, I think it was, at the very last minute, and because that's only when I heard about it, I went to see Steppenwolf at Le Bile, which in itself to me is a gem, along with the theater, which, please God, will open soon. And I was stunned that it wasn't packed out. I was also stunned that there was nothing to do for an hour and a half before Steppenwolf came on, and, except there was a burger or whatever at place, but nothing. Now, as probably a number of you know, one of Steppenwolf's most famous songs is called "Born to be Wild," and the marketing side of my brain... And the marketing side of my brain was saying, why, it's amazing that Steppenwolf came here. They were up on YouTube a few months ago. They were in southern Italy at a stadium with thousands, thousands. And this is relevant to this whole thing about, do we or don't we go on with this support? I think we do, but we have to do it very well, and it begins here at home. Because there is Steppenwolf a few months previously, packing out thousands and thousands. And here we are in our gem, Libby Bowl, with two bands, which honestly, I don't want to be unkind, but we're not up to snuff, really. Whereas here we are, Born to be Wild, we have all these ventures. We have food and vegetables and herbs and this wonderful market on Sundays. We have the most best arts and crafts probably almost anywhere in the world. You could have opened, not you, we, could have opened up at six o'clock.
I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap up now, Brant.
Yeah, but I'm going to finish my sentence.
Okay, quick.
No, not that quick. I'll be very quick, but I'm finishing. So you could have packed it out, and everybody would have had a wonderful time. And Steppenwolf would be happy, because as sure as eggs is eggs, they will not necessarily come back here. No rock band, and it's a very small world. So I beg you, I'm supporting it, but I'm saying, make the most of what we have got right now, okay?
Thank you very much. Barbara Snyder, followed by Judy DeVore.
Barbara Snyder is speaking tonight for Jim Jackson. Good government is prudent government, and a decision to begin a new and deliberative process to develop a tourism plan in the Ojai Valley is a prudent decision. For the city council to approve a measure to tax and spend between five million dollars or more to increase hotel occupancy seems irresponsible to a community that is already threatened by drought, traffic, and short-term rentals run amok. Moreover, a plan longer than twelve months in length makes it impossible for any future city council to solve unforeseeable problems, of which there will no doubt be many. Keep in mind Golden State Water on this count. I strongly encourage the council to put control of tourism in the hands of citizens, not a marketing group, whose interest is to make a profit by taking advantage of the things that make Ojai a unique community. Already, the constant flow of tourists is draining our valley of its charm, its quiet, and its peace. I encourage city council to vote down the OTID and begin again. Generate facts and data on which you can base wise decision and allow the citizens of Ojai to have input into the proposal. Please consider that the purpose of the tourism district is to sell Ojai. That is, to give over parts of our community for money. Imposing strict limitations on the ability to sell Ojai, especially for how much and for how long, is a wise and very prudent decision. Thank you. And let Barbara say that we don't drive in town on Saturday and Sunday. Not one time does our car move. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I see Christine, is that for Judy? Am I correct in that assumption?
I'm pretending to be Judy DeVore.
Okay, because I just wanted, and there's Kristen Jensen's, pardon me, second. Kristen Jensen's story, you can come on down if you're still here. Go ahead.
Okay. All right. Good evening. My name is not Judy DeVore, but I'm gonna pretend, and I'm a resident of Ojai. No one disputes the fact that tourism is essential to Ojai's economic survival. The question is one of how much tourism. The answer, of course, requires striking the right balance between competing values, money on the one side and quality of life on the other, of finding the point of diminishing returns. If time allowed, I would argue and believe without much opposition that the point has already been reached with respect to tourism in Ojai. Safety is one obvious problem. When I first thought about making a comment tonight, I was going to mention the fact that I was nearly hit by a car the other day on Ojai Street. I didn't know if the driver was a tourist or not, but I realized that all the traffic and congestion caused by tourism is affecting residents driving as well, making us less patient, causing cellphone distraction while we're waiting for traffic to move. So not only is the traffic irritating everyone and undermining Ojai's generally very easy collective state of mind, it is also threatening our safety, both directly and indirectly, not to mention the condition of our roads. The point is this: Tourism is good, but too much tourism is bad. So I'm urging council to limit tourism growth by not renewing the OTID, or, in the alternative, renewing it for a period not to exceed two years, and requiring a needs assessment be done before any further renewal, and reducing the assessment to not exceed one percent in order to reduce marketing activity. The issue is not unlike that of short-term vacation rentals, money versus quality of life. In that case of conflicting values, council wisely shows the latter through a community-focused and ethically informed choice-making and decision-making process. I urge council to apply the same process to the tourism issue before it tonight. Thank you. That's from Judy. Can I piggyback on and make a couple comments, or do I have to wait?
Okay, then the instance, there's time. Go ahead. Is Kristen anywhere out there? Okay, Christine, you're up.
It is very short. I just, as things were said tonight, I just wondered, you know, that news headline in the OVN just really was very upsetting to me. It made, it just, the pit of my stomach just turned when I read. It was my fault that we have all this traffic in town. And my question is, it's something for all of you to look into. When I moved here in 2001, there were not as many cars. Did the population of Ojai increase? Because that would tell you whether or not that headline is true. I don't think it did. And I don't think that all the teenagers that grew up in the last twelve, fifteen years got cars, not all of them anyway. So I don't, you know, I just, that headline really was upsetting. And I also want to tell you the experience of my family in the fall when they came here, when my brother passed. They could not get a room in Ojai. They had to stay in Ventura. So they spent their money and their meals in Ventura. So, you know, are the inns really empty? And that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Bianca, Bianca Rowe, and Erin Embry. If Erin is, you, you Bianca? Come on down. And if Erin's around, have him come up on deck.
Can you hear me? I've never done this before. Good evening. Thank you so much for having us this evening. My name's Bianca Rowe, and I own in the field 730 East Ojai Avenue, which used to be Hidden Treasures. Hidden Treasures was, from what I hear, a little bit of a challenging kind of thorn in the side for the city, because they didn't really apply to any of the rules. There was always furniture outside. The building was for disrepair over ten years. There was a forty-foot container with dumpster out the back, and there were rats everywhere, fleas inside, all sorts of hidden treasures. So we are here, and we believe in beautification, not gentrification. I am absolutely in support of the OTID. I am in support of it for all small business, small business that has been here for forty-five years, small business that has been here for two and a half. The small business is a community. We're a community of residents. We live here, we work together, and we work really, really, really hard. You know, there's not enough time in the day, as a small business owner, as a mother, as a wife, to manage everything. You know, we do our best to introduce ourselves to absolutely as many people in the community as we can, but it's not always that easy. And since coming here, you know, we've been faced with opposition and support, but I feel like that seems to be the way of the world right now, and it is the way of the community right now. You know, this is gonna be a choice of what financial support you give to tourism, but tourism, hands down, is one of the biggest revenue forms for the city at large. I believe in bringing money into the town. I believe in circulating money within the town. We bring money in, we support businesses here. You know, my family and I are completely dedicated to, sorry, you know, to supporting the restaurants. We shop locally, you know. We go to Rainbow Bridge. We put gas on Ojai Avenue. You know, we are here, we are a part of the fabric of the community. Our child goes to school here. And it's really important that we are all supported. I don't think this is an argument about traffic. Do I need to go?
Yep, you're.
I appreciate that that is something that is a concern, but I really do believe that this is something about supporting the small businesses in town. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there, is Erin here? If not, Molly Jordan? Okay, how about Sheri Ann, Kate? With Jay Simon, next.
Your vote tonight will determine whether the city of Ojai gives away its control of its economic base. An outside PR firm intends to use a boilerplate tourism promotion plan. It's the same one they provide to about a hundred and fifty other communities in California. It says so right there on their website. Now, if a hundred and fifty other communities have the same tourism marketing plan as we do, it forces us to compete with tourists, or against, to compete for tourists against all of those other communities. This becomes a race to the bottom. We elected you, our leaders, to represent all the citizens of Ojai. The OTID contract specifically states that it does not serve the general public. In fact, it states that it's strictly for the benefit of the businesses that it serves. You are being asked to relinquish your power to a special interest group. This general public, us, will have no say over this once it's done. This is simply unacceptable. The unintended consequences of OTID could hurt far more local businesses than it will help. I'm talking about businesses that tourists are unlikely to support, like financial advisors, tax preparers, attorneys, pet groomers, and even physicians, to name a few. And tourists don't donate to local nonprofits either. The main reason that tourists come here is to experience the cozy ambiance of a small town. The OTID will kill the proverbial goose that laid the golden egg. Our air quality, water quality, traffic congestion, viability of our nonprofits, and our affordable housing supply will all be seriously affected. Whether it's for one, five, or ten years, it's just not acceptable for this city council to give away its power. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Jay, followed by Elaine Needham.
Jay Simons. I live at 202 West Aliso Street in the heart of downtown, beautiful downtown Ojai. I do not hate tourists. In fact, I am a tourist. I love experiencing the uniqueness and variety of a new place. As a thirty-five-year resident of Ojai, I love sharing the pristine wilderness and small-town charm of our community. However, I have seen a dramatic increase in the number of tourists and their impact on our fragile village. The Responsible Traveler Guide puts it this way: Many of the negative impacts from tourism occur when the amount of visitors is greater than the environment's ability to cope with the visitor volume. In my opinion, we have reached the point where tourism's benefits are outweighed by the crush of traffic on the weekends, proliferation of tourist-centric facilities, and a hollowing out of our neighborhoods by short-term rentals. This past weekend, we all witnessed a community member express his frustration, not with tourists, but with our representatives, who are considering a ten-year extension and a potential doubling to a funding mechanism that is expressly designed to bring more and more tourists. Once this is approved, it cannot be stayed. The OTID management plan budgets up to seven million dollars over ten years to promote our relaxed rural lifestyle to the rest of the world. Whether that relaxed rural lifestyle can survive in the face of this ten-year marketing onslaught is the real question. Truly, too much of a good thing is a bad thing. Enough is enough. We are past the point of balance where more tourism becomes a detriment to our village. I ask you to reject the OTID and retain control over the crucial decisions affecting our unique community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Elaine here? She is. And Amy Denton on deck.
Can you let Elaine come by? Thank you.
I'm Elaine Needham. I'm not against tourists. Why would I be? But we have too many. I don't shop in Ojai any longer. I can't stand the noise. I go downtown, and I'm just, I have, my nerves are shot. The noise is unacceptable because of the traffic, and the motorcycles that go by, they have no respect for our community. So I, I feel unhappy that we have OTID that wants to promote tourism, because I don't think that we need a promotion any longer. Why can't businesses on their own advertise on their own? We've got the internet, we've got all kinds of things to attract tourists to Ojai. So I think that we have the wrong businesses in Ojai to attract people like me. I've been in Ojai since 1968. I came here with my father. And I've seen a continual degradation of Ojai. I don't enjoy it anymore. I don't go downtown, except to go to yoga class once in a while. And nothing bothers me, except the traffic and the noise. I don't mind the tourists, but that, they're part of the problem. So I don't have an answer to that, except that I feel that we don't need to attract them any longer with OTID. So what the answer is, I don't know. That's for all of you to figure it out. But I, along with many other people in Ojai, don't support the local businesses in Ojai, just for the reasons I've explained. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Okay, Amy Denton, followed by Veronica Cole.
Mayor Johnston and members of the council. My name is Amy Denton. I live right here in town, and I am here tonight to read a letter from Amanda Rogers, who could not be here tonight. She speaks in opposition to continuing the OTID, but not in opposition to tourists and all those and tourism. And although these are not my words, I do support them wholeheartedly. Ms. Rogers says, "Greetings. Let me share a little about myself before I address the OTID, so you can better understand my perspective. I'm a thirty-six-year resident of Ojai. In fact, I rent the house I grew up in. I attended Miramonte, Matilah, and Nordhoff schools. I left for a time to attend college, but am now back raising my family and attempting to grow our small business, Jack's Dollar Plus in Oakview. There has been much progress and growth in Ventura County as a whole, which is challenging for those of us who remember well the smell of fertilizer coming down the grade. Time always brings change, but we are at a crossroads, blah blah, we are at a crossroads in Ojai. The outcome of OTID proposal takes us down one of two paths. We will either hold tightly to our unique, charming community, or become like Solvang, a destination for visiting rather than living. Even if you take away my disapproval of the weekend traffic, the congestion in Miners Oaks on weekends, or the vacant second homes strewn throughout the valley, the sheer thought of making a ten-year commitment to anything is unwise. It does not make any sense to lock the valley into such a lengthy and costly commitment. As a small business owner, I listen a lot to my patrons. They are residents that are unhappy with the changes to our community, not because they don't want to share the beauty of our valley, but because they feel like they're being overridden by masses of people. The next generation of Ojaians are being forced out. If we continue to set tourist dollars above all, we will become the shell of Ashangra La. We are slowly killing the vibrant, living community that makes Ojai. I am not against tourism, I welcome it, but I believe in balance." I welcome it, but I believe in balance. There must be a way to balance the valley so that we remain our mystical majestic self and welcome visitors. The OTID does not seek balance. It seeks disproportion. And I hope you'll vote against it. Thank you for your time and consideration. Regards, Amanda Rogers.
Thank you. Veronica Cole, followed by Bob Ballard? Oh, okay. Do we have a Bob Ballard or?
Here he comes.
Nope. Come on down, Bob. And Janet, is it Cole?
Boy, that was a long wait. Well, so many people said so many wonderful things tonight that I agree with. I don't know where to start, so, and I don't want to take up any more time because I know this is going to go on for a while. Basically, I want to see balance in the valley. I don't want us to kill the golden goose, like someone else said. And it's a very difficult position to be in to try to balance economic development with, with aesthetics, basically. People come here for aesthetics. And two of the communities that have been mentioned are the arts communities and the spiritual community. Both of those communities, the arts and the spiritual community were, with a Boston accent, have, have, you know, been a foundation of this valley for a very long time. So I think a lot of the reason why people come here is for those reasons as well. So I hope that we can reach some kind of a balance here. You know, we seem to have a dearth of data about traffic and about tourism and about a lot of different things. So at the very least, I would urge the council to postpone making decision on this until there's better information or at the very least shorten the term of the agreement to a couple of years. So, so that's, that's all I really have to say because everyone else said everything I wanted to say. So thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Janet, is it Janet Cole? I, if I can, not sure. And Paula Power is on deck.
Hi, Janet Cole, 36-year resident. Ditto, 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 opposed. It seems to me the consensus is in. Your constituents, our neighbors, my friends, and Ojai residents are paying attention and have clearly spoken. We want our town back. Please keep in mind, whenever the council shows a backbone, that inspires the entire community and reaffirms the old adage, courage is contagious. So please keep first and foremost in your minds the quality of our lives here in Ojai, deny the OTID proposal, and continue making good decisions for our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Paula, was that Paula? No, oh, here comes Paula. Yeah, okay. And Tom Francis, next.
Council, mayor, staff. My name is Paula Power. I live in Miners Oaks on South Pueblo. I, I'm just so impressed with all the things that people have said. It's, it's just heartwarming actually to hear the response of the community. But I want to say that I was born in Oxnard and I grew up in Ojai, attended San Antonio, Matilah, Nordhoff. And like many children who grew up in Ojai, I felt like downtown was my backyard. Libby Park, the library, the arcade behind the arcade. And like so many adults who come here later in life and who call Ojai home, there is a comfort in the familiarity of the local places and the streets and the shops and the friends that you see on the street. Well, the staff of the Ojai Tourist Improvement District did an excellent job of putting Ojai on the map and bringing tourists to the valley. And so I have noticed, like so many others here, in the last couple of years, that there's barely enough space for the locals when you, to go downtown. And that I can imagine that the kids that grow up here today don't feel like Ojai belongs to them. They probably don't feel like Ojai is their backyard because it's full of other people that don't live here. And I think probably for the adults that call Ojai home, when they come downtown, it does, it's not that comforting place. You don't get that same sense of ownership that is so special to this valley. So I urge the council to not increase the assessment. If anything, reduce the assessment by half or not support the assessment at all. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Tom, Tom Francis?
Good evening, Mayor Johnston.
Followed by Tim Rowan.
Good evening, Mayor Johnston and council. Just want to make sure all of you have one of these. I gave them to the city clerk. So just wanted to go through this as quick as I can in the interest of time. So my friend Megan and I, we decided, since we felt pretty strongly about this, we decided to, and by the way, it's on reused paper. So what's on the back is, doesn't mean anything. But if you find it interesting, feel free. So anyway, we decided to survey Ojai Valley residents. So we did, we surveyed people both from within the city limits as well as in the county area. We surveyed 362 people. And so the first question is, how long have you lived in the Ojai Valley? One to five years, 70 people. Six to 10 years, 54 people. And 11 or more years, an astounding 238 people. So a lot of people, and at least the ones we surveyed, have lived here a really long time. And then the next question is, have you noticed an increase in traffic on our roadways in recent years? So I guess maybe the Ojai Valley News is not the only person, people that have an opinion on this. So people that said yes, they've noticed an increase, 332. People that said no, they have not noticed an increase, 27. People undecided, three. And then I just want to summarize two questions, just in the interest of time. So one of them is, did you know that the city has been collecting and spending monies to promote our town as a tourism destination to the tune of $1,200 a day? Yes, 112. No, 247. Undecided, three. Next question, did you know that the city council recently voted 3-2 to initiate the process of committing to several more years of the same and potentially increasing it? Yes, 103. No, 249. 10 undecided. So what those two last questions mean is that many people did not know what was going on at all. So next question relates to water. In light of dangerously low water supply levels in our valley that despite recent rains could require more extreme mandatory water rationing for residents, would you agree that the city of Ojai should refrain from involvement in collecting and dispersing funds to promote tourism until we have adequate water for those who live here? So basically, it's a question of, should there continue to be tourism promotion even though we don't have enough water?
You have to ask you to sort of start wrapping it up.
Okay, so 301 people said that we should stop promoting tourism until we have adequate water. 42 said we should continue. 19 said undecided. I'm going to skip one question and just go down to the last question, which I think is the most important one. Once we, once we have adequate water for residents, would you like the city of Ojai to resume collecting and dispersing between $1,200 and $2,300 a day, which I understand now may be a little lower, to fund Chamber of Commerce activities, to hire marketing professionals to promote our town as a tourism destination? So in other words, the question is, if we have enough water, do you want them, do you want them to continue collecting and spending this money to promote our town? Yes, 97 people wanted them to continue if we have enough water. 230 people did not want you to continue this, even if we have enough water. Okay? Undecided, 35. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Is Tim here? Yep. And I'm not, before you start, Tim, I can't read the first name. Is it Michelle, McHale Kimball? Is there a Kimball out there? I can read the last name. Okay, we're here. Okay, go.
Evening, Mayor Johnston, city council members and staff. My name is Tim Rowan. I'm the co-owner of The Mob Shop, and I am here to express continued support for funding of the Ojai Tourism Improvement District. We'd like to express our thanks to lodging businesses in town who have funded this effort and are willing to continue to do so. The funding combined with efforts of the Ojai Visitors Bureau have expanded the diversity and variety of culture that visitors bring to our town. We love our local patrons because they understand just how special Ojai is. We also understand that a major part of the local economy depends on tourism and that for many who own businesses here and employ people who live here, it would be difficult to make a living without welcoming visitors to Ojai. While we acknowledge the concerns of our fellow community members who are opposed to continuing funding for the Ojai Tourism Improvement District, we would pose that there are many ways to manage the influx of visitors, including campaigns and stories encouraging people to park and walk, ride their bike, or use the trolley; clear signage directing visitors to all parking lots, especially lower livery, which is way underutilized; more prominent promotion of the Ojai Trolley as an alternative form of transportation, including a clearly marked map on the Ojai Trolley website; established bike lanes so locals and visitors feel comfortable getting around by bike, and I would add to that, crosswalks with lights through town; places for locals and visitors to safely lock their bikes downtown; campaigns and stories that create awareness around water preservation; campaigns and stories that highlight the tradition of conservation in Ojai. Like many other reasonable people in our town, we see that there may be a need for compromise on the continuation of OTID, and we support the compromises proposed by the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for the opportunity to share our thoughts.
Thank you, Tim. Kathy Hartley, followed by John Ofterhide, is it?
Rachel Kimball?
Oh.
Kimball?
Did I see him? Pardon me.
Kimball.
Oh, Kimball? Oh, that's right, okay. Your first name?
Rachel.
Oh, Rachel is what that was. Okay, sorry.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Kimball. And although I live in Ventura, I'm a full-time employee here in the city of Ojai. I'm here to voice my objection to the renewal of the Ojai Tourism Improvement District, particularly at this time. Although tourism is an integral part of the Ojai economy and culture, the success of the district has already, the success the district has already realized has contributed to a number of issues of justified concern to the community, including water use and the proliferation of short-term rentals. These issues require time and measured attention to ensure that this community can bear the burden of increased tourism while maintaining and frankly, hopefully improving the quality of life of Ojai residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sorry for skipping over you, okay? Okay, Kathy. Yeah, followed by John Ofterhide? Is that the right pronunciation? Okay, good.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Hartley from the Lavender Inn. I've owned it for 13 and a half years. And in the very beginning, I did advertise myself. I tried to get it out on, advertising out on the website and through social media, and I really needed help. I was part of the inception of the OTID, of the Ojai Visitors Bureau. I started it with some of your colleagues and some of the chamber members. I have a different perspective than a lot of people here because I have one foot in Ojai and one foot in an adjacent city. And I've worked with both Visitors Bureau, Visitor Bureaus. I find this one very effective and has helped me tremendously. But I know what it is like to have been a resident where the storefronts are empty. I know what it's like to be a property owner and have my properties empty, my property empty, and nobody wanting to rent it because of the business is so low there. And I know what it's like to be a business owner and have to close because of lack of business during the week. Weekends were great, weekdays were slow. And I saw that happening here. And with my business, it was the same thing. Midweek, as a lot of hotels and the merchants, the restaurants, are slow during the week, and we really need the OTID. One thing that nobody has brought up at all is that I've worked with Veronica and I've, previously I had problems with people wanting to come and stay at the inn and getting travel writers. And so I can depend on her to help me vet the visitors, the travel writers. And they're really good about keeping away people who are not classy and, and keep the integrity of Ojai. And my, my tourists that come and stay with us are, they really respect the authenticity of Ojai and also the beauty of Ojai. Thank you.
Thank you. John, followed by Teal Rowe?
Mayor and council. I come to oppose OTID. And I've been listening to everyone, and it's, it's, of course, a quality of life issue. And at the same time, we've got businesses who, and we depend on tourism. So it's, it's clear we need the tourism. And so it's not to throw away the tourism. No one wants to do that. But when the quality of life starts to suffer, when we don't have enough water, when even driving here tonight, it was like I was at signal, at the light, signal, and this motorcycle zoomed right by me as the light was changing. It was like, whoa, where are you coming from? And it was just, for me, a look of, you know, what is happening in our town? I've been here, I've lived in the town for 25 years. I think it's incumbent upon you all and actually all of us to get a real clear picture of how many people are coming into town, what's going on. I would, I would love to have more facts. It would help me to actually, you know, even be clearer about what I would like to see for the town. How many people are coming in? What is the residency like during midweek now, not back in 2008? So as to make a, an even better judgment. So I would love it that you all take it upon yourselves to, one, do an assessment, and two, come up with a plan. And three, actually, that I also agree with the gal who talked about taxing and that I want you to do that, not some outside source. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Teal Rowe, followed by Megan Burquist?
Hello, mayor and council. Thank you for being here. I really appreciate some of the things that have been said, and a lot's been said, and I, I think you know the issues. I'm completely opposed to the OTID and continuing it. I think karmically, it's a really bad decision. I think, slow this baby down. I'm not against tourism. I've been gone for five years. I've just come back and I can't believe this town, how much it's changed. I feel like it's coming back to the pot of the frogs that are slowly boiling away and used to it. And it's, it's, it's not really funny. It's sad. And so I brought some of the mountain down to the Mohammeds because tourism and plastic bottles. Five years ago, walking Shelf Road every day, you don't get plastic bottles and dog do bags, which I chose not to bring to you tonight. But there's a lot, there's a lot of trash up on the trails, and there's a lot of dog do bags, and it's really affecting the mountains. Forget about my life, just put it on the mountains and the sacredness of the ground. And with the cultural affairs issues going on, how can that not be woven in to the tourism thing when we're talking about a market-based economy? When, how can we go into a market-based economy when everything's so volatile economically? How can we do business as usual? And I understand, I understand what people are saying that have businesses. And I've done business in Ojai for a lot of years. And Scott Iker, I love you dearly. But it's not the same. And it's going to go over the tipping point if this decision is made toward that. And I, I didn't want to speak tonight. I didn't want to even bring up a card. At the same time, I want to know and I want to look at your eyes tonight because I will hold you accountable for the tipping point of Ojai. And I thank you for listening.
Okay, next, Megan Burquist, followed by, is it Sabrina? Yeah, I see it as a second card. Yeah, it was a different handwriting the last time.
Megan, you can start now.
Okay. I was waiting for the sorting to stop.
I was getting the translation from the Rosetta Stone here. It's helping me. Yeah, thank you, Bill.
Hello, mayor and council. Thank you so much for this hearing. A few weeks ago, I was talking with some friends and, about the vote tonight, and I realized that they had no idea what I was talking about. And I was surprised, but then I remembered that six months ago, I had no idea what we were talking about here. And some friends informed me, and I was very grateful. So I was wondering how many people out in the community don't have any idea or didn't have any idea about the marketing of Ojai. And so my friend Tom and I, well, I went way out of my comfort zone, we'll say. And we took this survey and went out into the community and talked to, like you said, more than 350 people. And the three things that stood out for me were that most people did not know Ojai was being marketed at all. That they had no idea, if they did know, they had no idea how much was being spent. And that almost no one knew about the vote tonight. And I'll just say, the best part of my experience was, and there were a lot of good parts, but was the gratitude for people who didn't have any idea about this to kind of have, you know, not that I did any great thing, but that, oh, wow, this information that I didn't know existed. And so they would say things like, don't let us become Solvang or Cambria or Avalon or Sedona. Ah, so. So I am not opposed to tourism, truly, but along with many of the people who spoke, I really think we need balance. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this is, I gotta study this for a moment. It says, please call these speakers in order, one, two, three. Okay, there's David Byrne, followed by Marcy Tozier. Proceed.
Good evening. My name's David Byrne. I am personally opposed to the OTID, though this evening I am here to read for Nigel Chisholm, who is unable to make it, out of the country. I hope he hasn't been deported. So, these are the words of Nigel.
After you read his letter, we might.
Yeah. These are the words of Nigel without the eloquent delivery. Mr. Mayor, Council members, thank you for indulging me in my absence once again. I am grateful and fortunate that we still have a community to lend our voice to speak my words for other ears, so here I go. Here is a list of simple questions asked in an email to the Chamber of Commerce President Scott Iker, questions to which he would have had the answers readily available in his head. Number one, how much did Civitas receive to draft the current OTID? From whom? Number two, how does Civitas get paid under the current OTID? Do they receive a flat fee, a percentage, a retainer, or some other form of payment? If so, how much? Number three, do any chamber members or officers receive, do any chamber members or officers receive compensation from the OTID? If so, how much? Number four, under the proposed OTID extension, how does Civitas get paid and how much? Number five, is Veronica Cole an employee of Civitas, or the Ojai Valley Chamber of Commerce, or the Ojai Visitors Bureau, or any combination thereof? How is she compensated? A flat fee, a salary, compensation, a commission, a percentage of the OTID, or some other form of payment? And how much? Number six, who are the members of the Owners Association? Number seven, what are the costs of the renewal of the OTID, and who charges them? Civitas? Number eight, how much money is in the contingency slant reserve fund? I would like copies of the annual reports submitted to the Ojai City Council for the years that the OTID has been operating. This is a direct quote from Mr. Iker's emailed response received eight days later. Quote, "As I have been advised, I am not required to provide documents, I am only required to provide documents, not answer questions," end quote. He refused point-blank to give simple answers to simple questions. He did indeed provide some documentation. Most of the answers were not discernible from the documentation provided. Regardless, this is, is.
I'm gonna have to ask you to wind it up a little bit there.
Regardless, is this now the type of village we live in? A village where readily available information is intentionally withheld or buried in an avalanche of irrelevant paperwork in such a manner as to easily hide the truth? Information that is certainly required in order to assess the validity and appropriateness of the Civitas tax increase that could fundamentally alter our little village for generations to come.
Thank you.
The letter will be continued.
Marcy Tozier, followed by Leslie Ferraro.
Let's be clear. The business of Civitas is to raise capital from hotels in the form of OTID-type environments. Their focus is their bottom line, not that of the communities in which they operate. They currently operate in a minimum of 96 cities in California and are expanding exponentially. Ojai fell into their honey trap five years ago. It is their best interest to secure a 10-year extension of services, even though the first five have not proven successful except to their bottom line. The hotels are apparently bemoaning a 50% occupancy rate after five years of the Civitas scam. After such abject failure, the question simply becomes, who is getting rich off of this relationship? Does the Chamber of Commerce gain by compensation derived from the OTID in what ways? Whose salary is paid by this? Clearly, if not already, these funds will become the sustaining factor in the Chamber of Commerce's, in the Visitors Bureau's budget, thereby rendering them wholly reliable upon the Civitas scam. Remember, our very own city attorney states that, once approved, this is a done deal. Civitas has control of marketing Ojai for the sole benefit of the hotels, and damn the consequences, and also controls the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce gets to sit back and relax.
Can I have a brief for just a second, Marcy?
Sure.
If I'm understanding what you're reading, the impression is, is that Nigel thinks that Civitas benefits from a 10-year extension? They actually, I believe, maybe it's not for us to answer, but I think that that question was answered a little earlier.
Well, in fairness to Nigel, I think he asked a lot of questions, and he wasn't really given complete answers, so he didn't have the benefit of listening to Scott Iker tonight. I think if he had heard what Scott Iker had to say finally tonight, he might have said something different.
Okay.
But I'm just reading it the way he wrote it.
Right, I understand. I just wanted to correct you if it was a misimpression to the audience, but go ahead.
Yeah, okay. Chamber of Commerce gets to sit back and relax. Um.
It sounded funny. Chamber of Commerce gets to sit back and relax.
He says, "On the back of a plan in which no one in our city has any knowledge or control over." Awesome. Let's put our feet up and break out the cigars. I'll bring the champagne. Perhaps we could do that on a Saturday or Sunday in front of the Ojai Visitors Bureau, which strangely enough is closed on the very busiest tourist days. Maybe their purview is to bring in tourists and then wash their hands of them instead of helping them? The current Civitas plan stipulates that the funds can only be used to benefit the contributing hotels. Lovely. Why don't the hotels just get together, form their own marketing firm, hire a few locals, and save themselves a whole heap of money? It will amount to the same result at a minimum, and they could target the clients they actually want. Additionally, they wouldn't have to be concerned with local STRs being included in the deal, lest we forget or overlook that Civitas did, in fact, include STRs in their original plan. They still wouldn't need to concern themselves with what's best for the town, but without the cover and insulation that Civitas provides, they probably would.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, followed by Lynn. Hi.
Hi, this is part three of Nigel's letter. So once again, we end up back in the same place.
Part three, this is a trilogy.
It is. No, it's a four-parter, yeah.
An English trilogy.
So, once again, we end up back in the same place. Precisely who or whom is benefiting from this deal? The answer is simple: the Chamber of Commerce, the Visitors Bureau, and John Lambeth. He's the guy who wrote the law from which he is now profiting. And who are the losers? In our case, it's the city of Ojai who will lose complete control over the growth of the city, Ojai citizens who will see the demise of their ability to impact their city through the denigration of their voting franchise, and strangely, the hotels themselves, who will now be locked in a death match race with at least 96 other cities in California. A race, incidentally, whose winners will be decided by the very corporation, by the very corporation that they have employed to save them. We need to seriously question the ethical base of a company who set itself up to benefit from a law that its owner wrote and got passed, creating the legal rules to play its own game and get paid for it by selling cookie-cutter tourist promotion plans to the very same people who compete against each other in the same marketplace, while cutting out the legal ability of elected officials to alter or halt the game. And we want to do that for why? Can someone please explain that to me? Again, who wins here? Perhaps the chamber who's pressured certain individuals not to speak against the OTID? Just a thought. You, Mr. Mayor, and council members are starting, staring down a very long barrel which is loaded with consequences that no one understands. As Donald Rumsfeld once famously noted, there are knowns and, there are known knowns. These are the things that we know we know. There are known unknowns. That's to say, there are things that we know we don't know. But there are also unknown unknowns. I know. They are the things.
Why would anybody quote Rumsfeld?
I don't know.
Even he's not doing it anymore himself. Okay.
There is an interesting point, though. There are things that we don't know, we don't know. And here's the thing, there are all things that you know you know. These are known unknowns. This can easily be resolved with a study, and that's, that the city can handle. It can be funded by the OTID, but certainly, it should be organized without the input of chamber, whom we now recognize is not an impartial player. Once the study is done, we will then move into the territory of known knowns.
Okay, well, thank you, Nigel. There's also a saying that says what's really dangerous is.
Fourth and final.
Yes, which, you know, what you think you know that just ain't so, but, okay.
Fourth and final.
Oh, there's a, oh. I'm sorry, it was not a trilogy, sorry.
I thought it was just a trilogy.
Yeah, right, okay.
I am aware that some council members took offense at my use of the word largesse in my previous letter. It was entirely appropriate, given how the OTID came to pass. I take offense, not at words, but at actions, and I take offense at what the OTID is and the fools for which it has taken us. For those of you who didn't like the term largesse, you'll really dislike what's coming up soon. At this point, given the obfuscation of the Chamber of Commerce and what we know about Civitas, we should really just dump it completely. The hotels should advocate for that, too, simply for business reasons. And it now appears that there has been some backdoor dealing for a five-year, one-and-a-half percent deal, period. If accurate, that is disgraceful and should be dismissed out of hand. Talk about desperation. The Chamber of Commerce, as a direct beneficiary of the OTID, parentheses, read free money, end of paren, will cynically kick against that. However, if the council chooses to extend this scam, it should be exceptionally limited in scope and duration. The rules should be completely rewritten. Everything regarding it should be absolutely transparent and easy to understand by a fifth grader, and it should be for no longer than it takes to use it to fund a study to determine the best future and outcome for Ojai and its citizens. Frankly, anything else reeks of corruption and collusion. I honor your service to this town. I do hope that you honor your service to this town's future. I'm pretty much done for now, but, but there.
Is that you or Nigel?
But not, no, but there is so very much more to say as it relates to multiple areas of this issue. I'll end with this. If, if, if it is true that job one for the President of the United States to protect, is to protect the citizenry, then it naturally follows that job one for the Ojai City Council is to protect its citizens. I urge you to do job one and put the brakes on this power grab at the expense of all who live here. Nigel.
Yeah, did Nigel leave the country? Yeah, right, yeah, okay. Okay, well, thank you. Steve Edelson, followed by Peggy, Peggy Sarah.
Leslie, who was the first one out?
Leslie, do you want to go before me?
Oh, yeah, come on.
Would you please, because I think that is right.
That, you go first.
Are you sure?
You want to?
Okay, you know, are you gonna go first? Are you, Leslie? All right, well, I'm Steve Edelson, and I guess I'm of special interest, because I'm the owner of the Ojai Rancho Inn property, the Hummingbird property, the Capri, the Topa Vista in Miners Oaks. I recently gave my wife the ranch house as a wedding present, and we also are the landlords at a Deer Lodge. So I'd be the person who benefited from, from this if there was a benefit, but let's let the past be our judge first. Scott Iser and the Chamber of Commerce have never helped any of our businesses and have done everything they can to hurt our businesses. We are a family business. And when I say family business, I bought those hotels because I was so offended by the price of the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa. I like owning a hotel when I used to run them, and we did, you know, people would come for the 50-year reunion of Thatcher or Villanova and fill up the hotel, and I'd get to meet everybody and their families and hear the stories, and that doesn't happen anymore. And that's one of the reasons I leased the hotel to Mr. Sewell, who's sitting over there, because now those people are priced out of the hotels. They can't afford to stay in the hotel for $256 a night, plus 12% more to help Mr. Iser. When people here say that they weren't aware that Mr. Iser was marketing.
Move back a little bit.
That they weren't aware that Mr. Iser was marketing Ojai, that's because Mr. Iser's marketing consists of him traveling, and, and a good example, when I say let the past be the judge, is 10 years ago, I asked Mr. Iser, when I joined the Chamber of Commerce, why was the visitor's center not open on Sunday when all the visitors are here? And Mr. Iser said he didn't want to work on Sunday. And I said, well, why don't you hire someone for $15 an hour? And after four years when he didn't, I quit the Chamber of Commerce, and so did all my businesses. But furthermore, I'd like to say that I, I, as a person who lives here, whose kids have gone to Monica Russ School, to OVS, who's funded the Oak Grove Scholarship, whose family donated the dog park, I would like to say that no one in this room needs Mr. Iser's help turning Ojai into Anaheim. We don't need Mr. Iser's help advertising for our businesses to put heads in beds. We don't want the government to make us hire Mr. Iser to put out a message for us. The reason the law states that the money can only be used for the hotels that give the money is because of previous lawsuits. I assure you, after hearing the attorney, Sabrina, speak earlier, whose daughter went to Oak Grove with my son before he went to Nordoff, I would like to say that I would like to seek the return of the money that Mr. Iser has collected, because I believe he'll have a hard time showing that he has created any benefit for anyone other than himself.
We're discussing the OTID.
The OTID, right.
You gotta wrap it up, though.
I'm gonna, okay. I will, I will assure this, this council and the town that if this, if OTID does pass, I will hire an attorney to, to, to seek the injustice. I will, because it's unjust for you to fund vacation rentals and hotels in the county at our expense, and Mr. Iser and his, and his people have just done a terrible job. If the council will say that they wanted to raise the total TOT by 2% to be the same 12%, and they wanted to take the 2% to provide something for the kids in this town who don't have a bowling alley, don't have a theater, when I want to take my kids for shoes or pants, I have to go to Ventura. And then this Chamber of Commerce haven't sponsored a single event at the Libby Bowl, and they, and they have.
We've gotten your message, Steve.
But all they've sponsored is themselves.
Yeah, thank you, yeah. Please, please, yeah, right. Well, that was a surprise, okay. Barbara, Peggy, Peggy Lucera, followed by Barbara Bowman. Oh, no, pardon me, Leslie, is that, I'm sorry, I got it out of order. Come on, Leslie.
Well, I'm kind of scared now. My name's Leslie Clark. I'm the owner of the Nomad Gallery on Ojai Avenue. Ojai has been my home all my life. It was my great-grandfather's home when he moved here in 1868. My grandfather called it home when he was elected sheriff of Ventura County in 1923. My parents called it home when they bought the family ranch in 1948, where I still live, and I called it home when I started Nomad Gallery in 1996. I have loved it here, not only for the beautiful natural environment, but for its inhabitants' diversity, and because it has always been a warm and supportive community. Now I wake up and wonder if I'm welcome in my hometown. If Ojai doesn't want tourists, it doesn't want me, it doesn't want my store. I'm an artist, evil that that may be, because it may not be what everybody needs, so maybe I don't belong here because I have an art gallery. We've worked together to make Ojai what it is. The wise ban on chain stores has given us one of the most unique shopping experiences anywhere. It has always been tough to stay in business in Ojai. Many stores have come and gone, and now shopping has really changed. Our small, resident-owned and operated stores that line Ojai Avenue now have to compete with the giants of online shopping, so it is even more difficult, and we need all the help that we can to get by. Of course, we don't always agree, but talking it out as friends and people who love our community, who have the love of our community in common, is the way we have to work it out. Maybe I'm wrong, but I thought that one of the things we all loved about Ojai was its artists, its diversity, and its unique quality shopping and restaurants, and its warm and friendly population. Please don't shut the door to tourists, because if you do, you shut the door to the valley residents and our employees who depend on those stores. We play by the rules, we pay our taxes, and we thought we enriched our community.
Thank you, Leslie. I'm sorry when I got your phone. Okay, come on up, Barbara, might as well.
Hi, I'm Barbara Bowman. You've heard me speak before. You know, I've been listening to all of this tonight, and I'm reminded of the thing, it's like, some of my best friends are, remember that expression people used to use? Well, that's what the tourist feels like. Some of my best friends are tourists. Nobody seems to like tourists in this town. That's, because if your first sentence is, oh, I really like tourists, but, I don't believe you like tourists at all. In fact, when the tourists drove in town on Saturday, what they saw was a big sign. In fact, when the tourists drove in town on Saturday, what they saw was a big sign. How many tourists are enough? When is enough tourist enough? Great, I had people walk my store. Does that mean that we're supposed to leave? Is this town shutting down? They don't want tourists? Let me take up the issue about the kind of stores that we should have so the citizens of Ojai will be happy shopping here. The Agulnicks had a stationary store they could not sell and closed, and that was in the '70s. The Y had a stationary store she could not sell and close. If everybody in Ojai is going to shop at all these needed stores, why did those people close? Why did the stationary close? Because not enough people even supported the things that they say they want. Rains has everything you could possibly want. And let's talk about traffic. I counted traffic, 1:30 Sunday, 15 spots open downtown. Monday, 50 spots open downtown, because it's a bowling alley blanket. There is nobody downtown. So if you don't like shopping in Ojai, or if you don't want to be perturbed during, on the weekends, you can go Monday through Thursday and park anywhere you want. My husband comes down in and out of the store all day long, every day of the week, and there's never, we never don't have a parking place in the front. So let's say that you have to come to stoplight and wait 30 seconds. Gee, that's really tough. Try LA traffic. I mean, you know, I mean, this is, I really feel terrible for you. And as far as the employees go, all these people that work in these unique stores, as we cut down on businesses, owners will take over the hours, they get rid of their employees, and all these wonderful restaurants cannot survive, because I go to the restaurants, I know four people, but the rest of the people are all tourists. Those restaurants are open because of those tourists. Without those tourists, those restaurants are closed. There would be no Suzanne's, there would be no Monte Grappa, there would be no Azu, I guarantee you. Because the Ojai people just don't spend money. They don't go out to restaurants. So all the conversations, "We love tourists, we don't have the right shops, and if we only had this." Do you want knife sharpening shops? Do you want shoe repair shops? Do you want laundromats in the arcade? Would that make you happy? Because the shops that are there are unique, absolutely unique around the world. I've traveled, I'm a tourist, I've never seen a small town with the collection of stores we have. They're owned by individuals who live in Ojai, who employ people in Ojai. And it's a shame that we have been so thrown under the bus. First, it was the STRs, and the STRs, it's a 20%, 20% of the tourists' bedding is gone. It is absolutely gone. The STR ban did work. My business is down 20%. Now you're looking to take away the Visitors Bureau, and God knows what that'll cost us. I mean, none of the people that have spoken really are people that have been in downtown every single day, other than the one gal that has the coffee roasting. Everybody else, they really don't run businesses downtown. So their summation of what downtown is like, they're not right. Monday through Thursday, it's a bowling alley down there. I mean, you can go in any of these restaurants, they're empty. Sorry for the rant, couldn't help it, I've been sitting there holding it in.
You sat through Steve, so, yeah, he gets to the... Okay, thank you. Peggy LaSara?
Okay, I wrote something here, and Mayor, members of the council, chief, I wrote something here, and I'm going to let it go, because I'm going to make it my personal goal to raise some consciousness about what it means to try to work a job in Ojai and rent a place to live in Ojai. The merchants stand up and they talk about the people that they're employing. They're talking about their own viability, and that's a reasonable thing to do. But when they talk about their employees, somebody got up and spoke here, it's somebody that I like. I like her shop, I love looking at the pretty things in her shop. But she advertised a job this year. She was paying $12 an hour. The person who takes that job is bringing home $9 an hour. That means that person is bringing home $360 a week if they're working full-time in her shop. Now, if that person is lucky enough to find a room to rent in Ojai and has one or two good friends that they can share a room in the house that they can find in Ojai, that person is lucky. That person isn't going to go into that shop and buy a hand-painted silk scarf. That person isn't going to go to Suzanne's. So when these people are getting up and talking about whether or not their business is making it here, and whether or not people here are supporting their businesses, they're talking for themselves. And now I'll read my letter.
You're on the amber light, so...
Okay.
Make it quick, thank you.
Then, I'll just read the second paragraph. "The proposed increases in the terms of the OTID would likely generate more tourism and more tax revenues, but would create, but so would creatively planning a more diverse and ultimately more..."
Peggy, could you just step a little bit back from your mic?
And I'm done. I'll just say that tourism is like drinking corn syrup. It's going to give you calories, it's going to get the job done, but ultimately, it's bad for your health. Please say no to the increase in the OTID. Please say, just say no.
Adam Tolmac. Thanks for hanging in.
Oh, sure, yeah. Hi, I'm Adam Tolmac. I have the Ojai Vineyard Tasting Room downtown Ojai on 109 South Montgomery. And we've heard a lot tonight, it's been interesting. But I obviously completely support the OTID and feel like it's essential to bring in tourists. All the small businesses require some amount of tourism, and I really see tourism as a really pretty benign thing. I mean, there is not, you know, other industries are a lot more, have a greater effect on the environment. Tourism's relatively benign. People come and they leave. And I don't know, I really enjoy the tourists that come to visit our place. I enjoy talking to a diversity of people. I find it absolutely fascinating. It's not that our locals are boring, but people from other walks of life are fascinating to meet. And I just, I'm sort of dumbfounded that there can be such anger about, you know, an excess of tourism. I mean, you know, you can get rid of, get rid of the Bowl and get rid of the music festival if you want to get rid of tourists, but it just doesn't make any sense to me. And so I encourage you to vote for the OTID.
Thank you. Mary Nelson.
Good evening. My name's Mary Nelson, and I'm a resident of the city of Ojai. I have a small business in downtown Ojai, and I do not support the OTID. I'm here, though, to read a letter written by Tom Francis, and I happen to agree with it. "I support tourism in Ojai, but I have one question. How much is enough? We are a small town. Many of us choose to continue living here due to our deeply held appreciation of what Ojai is. We understand that tourism is a key element of our local economy. We also understand that a healthy balance must be struck so that our town does not become more about tourism than simply being a town. In the interest of generating revenue, a former council voted to engage in collecting and spending monies to advertise our town so more tourists would come. It seemed like a good idea at the time, as local businesses had thoroughly suffered due to a national recession, and all of the promotional funding would come from tourists. Simply collect the money from tourists and spend that on getting more tourists. But marketing has worked. We are rapidly becoming an internationally recognized brand. Maybe this is a good thing, maybe not. What if we were to allow Ojai to continue to be a small town that people, tourists included, discover as the somewhat hidden treasure that it is, rather than marketing it so heavily? I believe that for the most part, what truly attracted people to Ojai for the last hundred years and will continue to do so is what it is more than how it is branded. That's right, we want to be a town, a town with all its charms and quirks, a town with its own unique identity, a town that retains its sweet, beautiful soul, not simply the Ojai brand, not Solvang, not Avalon, not Cambria, not Venice's little brother up in the hills, not a slightly more affordable Montecito, just Ojai. I respectfully request that the city end the practice of collecting and spending money to increase our reliance on one industry that history has proven will leave us in economic dire straits. Every time there is a regional or national economic downturn, and instead, wholeheartedly seek diversification of our local economy, the attraction and nurturing of clean, low-impact industries that will be more resilient, resilient come the next recession."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Betty Newyam?
Hi, my name is Betty Nguyen, and I am a business owner in Ojai, and I moved here almost a year ago. And I've lived in all of different cities, and I've never been to a town where the local versus the non-local has been so contentious. And I've never been to a town that's never wanted tourism before, because I know that that is huge revenue for cities all over the world, and people fight for that kind of money. And being open for four months, I started a business to meet the actual local community here. And just letting you know that 75% of my business has been non-locals, but the repeat customers that are local have really embraced my business, and I've met artists through it. But I want to say that this demonization of tourism in this town is just, I've never seen anything like it before. I used to live on Drown, and I was more scared to drive on Grand Avenue than I was on Ojai Ave. And I know that the locals drive on Grand, and, you know, it was terrifying, and I don't blame the tourism for that, you know? And I also think that short-term rentals are not the fault of tourists, it's the result of greedy landlords and property owners who are speculating, people coming here and taking away from renters who actually want to build community here. So I think what we need is rent control and not hatred towards tourists. And so I don't know if I support, you know, hotels circulating more money to get more money, but what I do support is, like, when I lived in San Francisco, they used the hotel tax money to go towards the SF Arts Commission. So using that hotel tourism money to go towards the community and preserving the community here, and building infrastructure for these roads that they're using, making signage in these state parks that we love, I think is a more creative way to preserve Ojai, to make the locals happy, because even if you invest in OTID or not, tourism is going to happen here. People are going to come here, and I think that, I'd like to see people welcome them, because the tourists that come into my store are totally nice. They've come from Beirut, they're artists from all over the country, they spend money, they bike, they walk, and they are very respectful of Ojai and want to meet the artists, and they want to buy local artists' work that I sell. They're like, "Are these local Ojai artists?" So, you know, I'm appreciative of all the local people here. I shop local, I go to the farmer's market, I go to Watkins', I don't shop online. And a lot of people here are guilty of buying stuff from Amazon, you know? So it's, I feel like the demonization of tourism here is something that we need to work together with, with the city council, and not say no to tourism, but how do we use tourism dollars to preserve Ojai and to make everyone happy here? That's all I'd like to say.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone who turned a card in that I haven't called on? Your name, sir?
Kara.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I called that earlier, but come on up, yeah. I then lost it after that.
I think you've all heard very eloquent people speak from both sides. And my summary is, that agency that the council used, the tourism council used, did a great job. I mean, when I'm reading the New York Times and I'm reading about Ojai, they did a great job. They got our name out there. Getting your name out there in today's environment is easy. It's like throwing wood into a chipper. It just shoots the stuff out. And all these news agencies pick all this stuff up, and they cater to attracting more people to read their articles, so they throw out names. If you're from a particular area, or you're near a particular area, you're going to see that ad on the side of Google, and, you know, you're going to read it. So, you know, I don't really give them credit for doing that, that's just sort of what we've grown into. But they've attracted a lot of attention to Ojai. And the other point I want to make is, we're a small valley with limited resources, and some gentlemen spoke to that earlier, and we can't handle the volume that winds up wanting to come to Ojai on weekends. I'm also a bike rider, and in the past 10 years, you know, the bike riding has really, I mean, I try to stay off the roads on weekends where I used to ride all the time on weekends. It's just very busy and very impacted. So we've got a limited amount of resources, we've got a hell of a lot of people that know about us, and everybody wants to come here to check us out. And I really don't think that's what the people of Ojai are looking for. I think the businesses, at least the hotels, I've tried to put my family in, over the weekends they've been here, I had to go to Ventura to find hotel rentals. So, you know, I think they're busy enough, but that's my point. Thanks for this.
Thank you. One second. Matt, is it possible for us to tap the next item on the agenda, not to cut this off, but in order to be able to deal with it this evening after we're finished here? Or is that a...
The way it has been done before, which is possible, would be to table this item, pick that item up, then come back to this item. If you wanted to keep it going, unfortunately, you would have to be kicked to the next meeting. There's no way to keep, to just pick up this item and then keep going with, pick up the new item, and then keep going with this item.
Mayor Johnson, can I voice my opinion on that?
Very quickly, because we're fighting the clock.
I don't think, I think we should just finish this, and then we should discuss, when we're done, what we want to do with the items we couldn't take up tonight.
Okay.
And it's worth noting, on the item that has not yet come up, the Shepperle School, several have noticed, the deadline runs on April 14th, which is after both the workshop on Saturday and your next meeting on April 11th.
Which is my point.
Okay, so you're all right with that?
I'm all right.
Okay, great, okay, sorry. I saw a hand, did I miss?
I have to leave the room.
Oh, come on, okay, that's, that's fine. I have to leave the room occasionally myself.
All right. My name's Aaron Embree, I've lived here for a little while. I have to admit that I've kind of waffled on this a little bit, and I guess that makes me an ideology tourist. I was in a band that decided to move here and rent out a studio near the abandoned service station, just as you come into town. And, you know, word went out in all the interviews in the Rolling Stone, and the New York Times, and the LA Times, and the LA Weekly, and it was like, so-and-so's moved to Ojai, you know? And this was six years ago. And, you know, so I'm a big part of this trend that's happening here, that I think it's kind of arrogant to assume that a place like Ojai, this little, quiet little hamlet that everybody thinks, you know, Krishna Murthy, you know, still lives here or something, that we're immune to this trend that happened in Greenwich Village, and it happened in Silver Lake, and it happens, and, you know, and whether or not, you know, whether or not you vote yes or no, five years, 10 years, I know I can't afford to live here. And I was part of the problem that makes it, you know, impossible to cross the street safely with your kid on a Sunday afternoon. And I'm not a property owner, I'm a renter. And, you know, I just, I just think that a lot of the vitriol reeks of "Make Ojai Great Again," and I don't appreciate that, because you can substitute immigrants for tourists in any of these rants that have happened about going, about how Ojai is no longer what we thought it was, and that's never going to come back. And I don't think it's very fair to anyone sitting at this table to vilify you over whatever decision you make tonight.
Thank you. Okay. The game is on one of these pink cards I still have in my hand, and I guess you're the game show winner, otherwise we've come to the end.
But we're called Michael Haley.
I didn't get a chance to turn a card in. We can keep going. We can keep going. We started an agenda item, we can finish it.
Okay.
Yeah, you're not bound by the 10:30 rule to finish the item.
I was thinking in terms of cards that were filled out, do we have one?
We can go till 2:00 AM, I was just told.
Okay, well, Mr. Haley.
I'm Michael Haley. Thank you for giving me a shot here, even though I didn't turn in a card. I guess I should first mention that I was in politics in Napa County for 12 years. I was an elected official there, I was very involved in traffic management issues there. I helped write the 2009... I helped write the 2009 traffic plan for Napa, was on the General Plan Steering Committee, had other traffic experience there. And I'm, I'm always taken aback by what I hear people say about traffic in here. Every single thing I've heard about traffic in here is misinformation, including the, the article in the paper. I appreciate the fact that the papers brought it up and tackled it, but without going through it all, I mean, we don't have gridlock. We all drive here, we don't have gridlock, right? You've noticed that, right? But the problem isn't today, the problem is the future. The problem is what's going to happen if we continue to grow the tourism business? So we're concerned about future gridlock. There's really three pertinent questions that we need to have answered about traffic. How much of our traffic is related to tourism? How much capacity do we have left for traffic? And how much new traffic will be generated, by what level of an OTID? Nobody knows the answers to those three questions. We should not vote in a plan until we know the answers to those three questions. One of the things that the article said is that the average daily volume at Ventura and Ojai Avenue in 2015 was 22,000 and something cars. Well, I know that Caltrans rates two-lane highways like that at 24,000 cars a day. When you hit 24,000 cars a day, you've got gridlock all the way back down the road. We're really close to that right now. So what I'm, what I'm really wanting to say is that we need a professional traffic study. We, everybody is just saying things, you know, you can't stand on a corner and try to figure out who's in the car and think that you're going to be able, I mean, this is what, the level that we're operating at. This is a big, huge increase in business, and, you know, we really, we need to stop, we need to stop this, and we need to just continue what we have for a year, we need to spend some money studying that traffic issue and the other issues. The community will come together around this, I think. It's been a fairly poorly handled process. I think you should set up a citizens group, get the chamber to meet with some of the opposition, sit down. If we understood what was going to happen, I think everybody here doesn't want tourism to go down, we just don't want to get overwhelmed by it. We don't want to not be able to get into Ventura all day if we have a doctor's appointment. That's it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, did I miss anybody? No? Okay, well, let's, can I close the hearing? Do we need to ask questions in the hearing?
I, I would like first...
Just a second, I'm going to check in the city attorney.
You can close the hearing, the council could reopen it if you wish to ask questions of any particular speaker.
Okay.
You can close the hearing and cut off people continuing to come up.
Yeah.
And then council could deliberate and ask questions and proceed from there.
I was thinking that maybe we should take a, a quick break?
A little night break.
Oh, okay.
We've already, we've already left.
I'll tell you what. Okay, keep it going, I'll be right back.
Not sure about, not, not sure about this, let me make an attempt to just continue talking on, where we're at is to ask questions from, any deliberations from council?
Or Scott.
Or ask Scott to come up for a response?
You could ask Scott to come up and provide a closing comment from the applicant, or else...
Let me just think, this comment, the standard protocol is for the applicant to make comments at the end of, of all the public testimony. So I, I would suggest we follow, we had suggested that we follow standard protocol, so I would suggest we do that.
And as you invite up Mr. Iker, I would suggest setting a time limit on his comments.
And Mr. Iker, we'll five minutes due? All right, Mr. Iker, you're invited to the podium to respond and to answer further questions from council.
Did, um, may I refer to, did we close the public comment?
Yes. Proceed.
Okay, I'm pretty much standing by what my introductory statements were, that we are offering a five-year term, requesting one and a half percent, and, pardon me, and that we will offer a voting seat to a designated representative on the advisory committee, that designated, would be designated by the council. If you have questions, bring them, bring them up.
Well, did you hear any information given as far as, I think somebody said 1,200, there were a lot of figures and things said at the podium, were the, were the, did you hear anything that you want to correct? I think is what I'm asking. Is it true that there's, there, well, that's what I want to ask, yeah.
Well, primarily tourism is not the cause of all the ills in the valley. And I do firmly believe that the problem with STRs rests firmly with you all and your predecessors for not enforcing that ordinance when you had the opportunity, and that I don't think you're enforcing it well enough now, too. I believe that if it was firmly enforced, and onerously so, that there would be more affordable rentals here in town. And I do think that it would also cut down on the number of people who are here in off times and, and driving around with no compunction of breaking any rules, whether they're legal or just ethical or moral rules, because they don't live here. That doesn't mean that everybody who brings in, that goes to a short-term rental is a Neanderthal, but I'm just saying that a lot of times, they don't care.
Okay, where are we?
Well, I, I know I have some questions of the city attorney about the law, but that's probably premature, I think.
Is there other questions of Scott? Scott, you said earlier that you thought that the, at one point, the city funded this, I, I, the finance director told me it was $50,000 a year, but you had a different number?
No, in the beginning, let's see, it was 2012, so it was back, early 2000s, a group of us got together and gave a presentation to the city council, and there was a discussion about the difference between public relations and advertising. And eventually, we suggested to the council that we be funded enough to hire a director of tourism, and the council got kind of shaky about that because they didn't know what a director of tourism would do, they didn't know how to identify that job description, and they weren't at ease with that. So we came back with the option of hiring a public relation firm to promote the Ojai Valley. And at that time, we hired Ruth Ballin and Associates, who was a regional public relations and marketing firm based in Ventura. And for three years, the city funded us with $169,000, $160,000. At the end of the first year, they said, gee, it'd be nice if you could find a way to make this sustainable funding. And at the end of the second year, they pretty much told us, you need to find a way, and they suggested getting a T-bid. In fact, I think it was Steve Olson who suggested doing a T-bid, he said they're doing them all over the state, and that's what you might want to look into. So with the help of city manager Rob Clark, we found Civitas, and at the end of the third year, we were talking with them and got our T-bid together, and it went through. We asked for $50,000 to be able to get us through between the time the T-bid started and the contract with the city ended, so that we would have that, fill that timeline in. And I think for two years or one year thereafter, it's different because you all run on a different year than we do, we got $25,000, and then we refused any other offers. And that was 2014, I think, or 2015, I can't recall. I think it was 2014 or 15.
Okay. That answers it. Yeah, and that, that's accurate, having been on the council since 2010. Okay, we didn't close the hearing yet, have we?
Yes, we have.
You did, okay, good job.
Mayor Johnson, I had some legal questions.
Okay.
So I understand the environment we're in, is that okay?
Absolutely, go.
And you, before you begin your questions, Mr. Iker might wish to sit down, unless you have further questions for him, too.
Feel free.
Okay, thank you, Scott.
I would like to ask Scott a question, or is it too?
Okay.
I can wait, I can wait.
Okay, don't go too far.
You're, you're not leaving, are you?
No, go ahead.
Okay, my question is this, what are the practical repercussions if, if we were to pause and evaluate? Like, as far as, I don't, you know, if, what happens?
What happens if you vote not to renew?
Yeah, not, not necessarily as a permanent thing, but as a, if, like, what, what timeline, where are we now time-wise? Like, if we, if we made no decision tonight, or whatever, if we wanted to pause and evaluate...
Depends on how long you want to pause. Our current T-bid will expire on October 31st of this year.
Okay, so, does that mean that the opportunity to renew continues up until what point? Is that, am I asking...
The opportunity to renew without interruption in the funding stream exists until the funding stream expires on October 31st of this year. After that point, you retain the power at any time to renew if a new petition is submitted by the assessed businesses and a new process from day one has begun. If you act tonight to reject a proposal, or else act tonight perhaps to study the proposal for further time, continue the hearing, and then later decide to reject a proposal, it would need to begin again. And if you do either of those options, and don't act to renew it by October 1st, or 31st, then it expires. And then it would have to be begun again with a new petition and a new hearing process and all that, which is within your power, of course, if you decide to do so.
Okay, October 31st is how many months off?
Seven months from this Friday.
Okay, okay, so I just want to, I mean, I'm sorry if I'm slow to understand, but you are saying that if we made no decision tonight, that there is, there's no interruption, we're, we're simply evaluating the situation?
That's correct. If you took no decision and continued the hearing to some date in the future between now and the end of that period, there would be no interruption in funding at, yet. It would depend, of course, what happens once you finally make that decision.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. That was my question.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
I have a legal question, Mr. Summers, because there's been a lot of discussion about management and control, and the, and the, and the council having a hand in all of this, and I think, clearly, that's been, that's been heard, and I just want to make, sir, I understand all our options for modifying the management plan to address concerns. And I'm looking on page 24 of the governance section of the Red Line Management Plan, which has 36650, report by Owners Association, approval or modification by City Council. And I note, reading this, and I'm talking about options of what could be in a management plan, that it talks about a report shall be filed with the clerk and referred to the Property and Business Improvement District every year for that year, and among the things in Part B that it lists are the improvements, maintenance, and activities to be provided for that fiscal year. It talks about the estimate of the cost, and then it says in Part C, the city may approve the report as filed by the Owners Association, or may modify any particular contained in the report and approve it as modified. Does that mean that the city council could modify a particulars of improvements, maintenance, and activities as defined elsewhere in this code, or not, for a given year, effective year?
Yes, the council has the power to modify the management plan report each year, and this section 36650 speaks to not this first time, the later years. The same is true under a different section for tonight, the first year's management plan. The council has the power to approve, reject, or modify it, noting that the modifications are bounded by the max original assessment setting. In other words, you have the, you have the power to reduce the rate, bounded, or increase the rate, but bounded by tonight's approvals.
I'm about the budget of the, in terms of the existing assessment.
Yes, you have the power to modify how they spend it.
So the idea that we're ceding control is not exactly accurate if we assert it?
If the council asserts that power, then you have that power, and I'll note...
It's an option, in other words.
Yes, and I'll note on, looking at the draft resolution, which is Attachment B, page 3, Section 9, the final sentence, this was added to clarify the point that was of some discussion last time, on whether, and I think is the point of dispute between myself and Mr. Iker, as to whether or not the council has the power to modify the report every year. The prior resolutions were silent as to that point. We have put in language that speaks to this Section 36650, making it quite clear that the council has the power every year to modify the report, and thus to modify the assessment's rate, if the council so chooses to exercise that power. It's worth noting, however...
By the specific activities.
And modify what the money is spent on. It's worth noting that that modification power is limited to the set up or down by no more than a quarter percent in each year.
Yeah, I'm not really speaking to the total amount, I'm speaking to the division.
Yes, you also have the power to change what the money is spent on.
The use of the total.
The limitations are, of course, the underlying Prop 26.
Right.
And that's captured in subsection C of 36650 at the bottom.
But there's a fairly large list of activities and improvements that can be done.
Yes.
And they, and as long as they convey specific benefits associated with the lodging industry, no matter, and it's okay to have incidental benefits on that.
Incidental, but not, non-incidental benefits to others.
So for example, if there was a, something that would, if it was judged by council, or judged as part of a management plan that we would approve, that a proper traffic studies, our tourism sourcing surveys were of specific bent to the lodging industry, could we specify that that should be in the budget?
With the right factual foundation, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Right, thank you.
Mayor, I'd just like to piggyback on that. So, you know, that's one of the, Matthew, that's one of the, the concerns that I have is the fact that it, it isn't specifically clear, but what you just said is if we make it factually to council, obviously with your support, that we could ask the Assessment District to fund a traffic study, and that we could ask them if we wanted to, to actually provide us a study of the benefits of full occupancy and mid, midweek occupancy, and so that we would have some facts based, you know, based moving forward on what the impacts of occupancy are going to impact our community. That's just my, my concern moving forward on any of this, is the fact that we don't fund this, that we have the Assessment District fund it, because the Assessment District is what's impacting the community.
Those two studies, which I understand to be a traffic study, understanding the impact of the OTID as existed and as proposed for renewal on traffic in the city, and thus on accessibility of the lodging, accessibility of tourists to the lodging businesses, noting that this is largely a one-way in-town, up 33, a little bit up 150, a little bit on the other end, out the other end of 33, that kind of information would be viable to the OTID as it considered what marketing approaches to apply or not apply. That would be defensible as a use of the funds, both under the existing funds, to the extent they remain available for this year, and under the funds if renewed for the future. And the other study on, I confess, what was the other study you mentioned there?
The second one is on room content, you know...
Oh, occupancy variability.
Occupancy studies.
That kind of thing, I think, would also be defensible under the OTID funding, again, because it speaks to what marketing efforts have been successful and what marketing efforts could be successful, helping to find the options for the Visitors Bureau and the council as you look, if you renew the district, to spending the money, what would be helpful, what wouldn't be helpful.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if no one else has questions of, of the city attorney, I'm prepared to make a motion for the purpose of further discussion.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion to renew the Tourism Improvement District for a period of five years at a 1.5% assessment rate, with a member designated by the city council or a city, a sitting member of the city council to be a voting board member on its board, and also for the city council to retain the right to modify the management plan on an annual basis. Second to that?
I'll certainly second for purposes of discussion, and I immediately have a question on the motion.
Okay, ask the question, yeah.
Mr. Summers, you're moving your hand.
I was waiting for you to ask a question.
Okay, I was going to ask a question to the motion maker.
Oh, that's fine.
And probably answer for you, too.
Sure.
There are two governing groups. There's the Owners Association itself, and then there's the, the, some sort of, yeah, the Guidance Committee, the Advisory Committee. My preference, if we go forward at all, would be to have a council appointee on both of those groups. On the Owners Association, would have a per... On the Owners Association would have a per, would be a permanent seat of a council appointee, as well as on the Guidance Committee. Is there a problem with that, Mr. Summer? I'm asking, I'm telling you my preference.
The council has the power to require an appointment, I think, of both of those boards. I would recommend that it not be a member of the council, but rather someone appointed by the council.
I think I said council appointee.
Okay, that's, we're on the same page there, then.
All right, I, I'm-
So, I, that's my preference, if that's not clear on the motion.
That's fine, I'll withdraw my motion and make a new one.
Okay.
Or modify my motion to include an appointee on both of those boards.
And I'll make another comment. I would like to see under services on page, on the second, on page two of the Red Line, where it lists overview services, and it says what the OTID is designed to provide specific benefits. And then the second sentence starts, "Marketing and sales promotion will increase overnight tourism." I'd like to add a third sentence, just to make sure, in that the council has full flexibility to manage this situation. And that is to add the sentence, "All activities listed under State and Highways Code under Activities 36606, and contributions to improvements under Improvements 36610 are eligible for budgeting."
Okay, I have no objection to that, but I'm going to ask, with the-
Yes.
With the permission of, of the chair, if there's any difficulties with that additional language, Mr. Summers.
And just for my understanding, which pages do you want to add that to?
I was thinking on the, on the overview, on page two of the Red Line.
Oh, the overview on the front, under services.
This, under services. And in effect, as I read the services language, that is more restricted than what's allowed under the, the enabling legislation. In that it, and, and to me, to clarify, and with respect to the previous discussion, I would like to make sure that all activities under the code listed in 36606, and all contributions to improvements under the improvements definition of 36610 are eligible for budgeting. Eligible for inclusion in the budget.
That'd be okay to add as a legal basis. Always bear in mind that it is limited under Prop 26.
Of course.
To matters that benefit these assessed businesses.
I was referencing 26.
Right, that language would be fine to add.
Okay.
I will, I will amend my motion to include that language as well.
I, I would like to ask if you would consider amending your motion for two, to, to, instead of five years, to two years, so that we don't pass this on to the next council.
Not at this time.
Okay, I, okay, I would like to place a motion to divide the question. Divide the question between renewal and the question of how much the rate is.
That would be in order if you secure a second.
I second. Okay, are we still discussing? I'm not ready to-
We're discussing the division of the question, if there's any comment on it, but to take it a step at a time. Are we going to go forward, and then at what rate?
All right, so, if I understand your motion, Mr. Mayor, it is incorporating all the terms of my motion, except for the 1.5% assessment rate?
No, it's, it is, it is separating the question, yeah, it would, it would take that, yes, up to this point, yeah. Then I would have a, I would move to amend the, the duration of it, but, but, okay, let's, first, we got to divide the question, if that's a-
I'm not sure that the entire council understands your motion. As I understand your motion, it would be to first vote whether or not it is the will of the council to renew the district, period.
Correct.
If denied, it dies. If approved, it would then go to a question for the council as to how long that renewal would be. And the range would be somewhere between minimum one year, maximum 10 years.
Correct.
And as noted by the audience, built into that would be the rate, max 1.5, something less.
No, the part that's being divided is separating how much, the percentage, the one and a half, the two, or the existing one. Hold that until we make the first decision, which is, are we going to go forward and renew it, and for how long? Once we talk about if we're going to renew it, then we can start discussing the, the question of how long. Paul's got it on-
So, it's really your, your motioning to divide the question in three ways. Whether renewed or not, if so, how long, if so, how much.
Right, either that or I was going to amend the motion, and then we would discuss the length of the extension.
And you could do the latter two together, how, how much and how long could be considered together?
Well, I think that-
But it's up to-
I'd rather have us have a discussion on the how long. So, not to determine that in advance, just simply separate those two questions.
So, it would then be three questions, whether to renew, how long, how much? That's how I understand.
Okay, a question for renewal, for how long? Without a determination of that.
Then I understand your motion to be, to first have the council consider whether to renew and how long that renewal should be. The motion on the table is, yes, to renew at five years.
Right, and then we have a discussion on the possible amendment to that.
And there's a proposed amendment that was not accepted as an amendment by the maker, which means it could be offered as a substitute motion, if a second was derived. But what would take precedence would be the motion to divide the question. So, as I understand your motion, is to divide the question, to be first to decide whether to renew, and how long, and then second separately to decide how much. And I understood, is that what the second understood the motion to be?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have a roll call on that, if there's any?
Are, are we done discussing? I mean, we're about to make a very momentous decision.
Hang, hang on. All we're doing is separating the question of whether it's to be renewed, and then later deciding what the percentage would be.
Okay.
Okay, so, we talk about the renewal, now we'll then talk about the length of the renewal.
Okay.
Okay, assuming that the question gets divided.
Right, I'm, I'm still confused. Are we just voting to divide this motion into three with no, with no determination as to whether we're renewing it at this point, how long we're renewing it for, or how much the amount is?
Right, we are deciding that, we're just simply separating rate, you know, percentage, from years.
That's correct. This is a vote to approve the division of the question, not actually to approve any of the questions.
They will debate it separately.
All right, I understand it.
So, all right, so, the amendment, the substitute motion is to, make sure I understand what we're voting on, or maybe I should have the clerk read it.
The clerk could read it, or- I could restate how I understand the motion.
I think we need to have it defined.
Yeah.
What exactly we're voting on? Okay.
I'm happy to provide that.
What I'm suggesting we do is all that you and Paul have put on the table, but just simply dividing the question of how many, how long this will go. You know, one or 10 years, or anything in between, or not at all. That won't be decided by dividing the question, it'll just simply separate that part. Then on the other side, we will have, will it be 1%, 1.5%, 2%? And we'll debate that separately. So, there's no point in debating the, the rate if we're not going forward.
I think I understand.
We have a roll call on the separate dividing of the question?
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
No.
Councilmember Blatts?
No.
Mayor Protem Weyrich?
No.
Okay.
So, can I, are we now discussing?
We haven't passed anything yet.
Right, okay.
That was a vote on, for the members of the public, that was a vote on how to vote on the matter. That wasn't a vote on the actual matter. The motion that remains on the table-
Yeah, okay, just a second. Everyone calm themselves, okay.
Okay, okay. I want, I want to lay to rest that anyone sitting at this table is vilifying tourism or business. I would not be sitting here if I did not care deeply about you, your lives, and this valley. I've lived here over 60 years. I believe with all my heart that Ojai already has an international reputation for our culture, our arts, our spirituality, the beauty of our mountains, our Schumash heritage, everything that makes Ojai unique. My job, sitting here, is to make sure that it, that is not destroyed. A couple of times, you mentioned that your rent is going up. There may be more tourism, and may be more money to be made, but the rent will go up. Outside investors are coming in and buying up Ojai. You have got to understand that. There is a lot of money to be made out of tourism. We can have balance, but we need to open up our eyes as to what's really going on. For this and many other reasons, I think it's in the best interest of the Ojai Valley to pause and evaluate the situation. To me, that is the only prudent decision at this time. There is so much at stake. We really are at a tipping point. And I say this with deep love for every single person sitting here. I am truly sorry that anyone feels vilified, or anything of that nature. That is not my intention. And I do not support the irresponsible motion for five years, doing something we don't know the results of.
Please, please, please. Okay, I move to amend the, well, I don't know if this is a substitute motion, no, it's a, to amend the motion to a two-year renewal at 1%. That is a true renewal. And two years, plus the half year that's still left, or seven months, will provide ample time for us to work all the details out on this. And it will also keep the issue before the community, and we will not be binding the future councils to anything. Is there a second?
I second that.
The amendment is voted on first. If accepted, it replaces the, the main, the underlying motion. If denied, the underlying motion stands as the motion on the table. And the amendment is a motion to renew the T-bid at two years at 1%. And I, I understand also with the council appointees-
That's what I was going to-
On the Owners Association Board and the Visitors Bureau Board.
Putting it, fine. Just not to take this beyond the two years, or to increase the amount of money being put into this, because, well, we'll get right into the debate. I, I think it was well said by Garrett or other people that we are living in a different world today than we were five years ago, or four years ago, with the internet. You, once you get plugged into the internet, and this maybe goes along with what Scott says, you know, part of the enemy of all this is the short-term rental. We don't, we don't have any control over that. But if you try to read a, a New York Times article on the internet, at least on our computer, boom, up pops Airbnb, boom, you can't get through the article without it coming up through, you know, all about Ojai. Now, I know that there's some kind of a special, what do they call it, a log rhythm, or something that's put into the system, that once you say you're interested in Ojai, and we live in Ojai, that that kind of advertising is bringing traffic, but it's not necessarily the traffic that's going in and buying very nice dresses, or jewelry, or artwork. But it is the sort of thing that does start filling up the short-term rentals. So, it seems to me that putting more money into advertising right now is not a great idea.
Mr. Mayor? I'm going to speak to the overall issue regardless of the, the, your motion or my motion, but I have, I have some really important thoughts on, on this. And having lived in Ojai for 34 years, it's a lot different to be out there than it is here. I've been elected to this position by everybody. Store owners, and people that don't want tourists. And I have an obligation to listen to everybody and not make up my mind till I have all the facts in front of me. And having heard everything. So, let me just, just give you a little bit of my thought process in terms of some of my background, not only just legal, but in the advertising business. Spending twice, or one and a half, or one and a quarter on advertising does not equate to one and a half, or two times, the tourists. It just doesn't. Sometimes you can spend in advertising twice as much as you're spending, and your business goes down. So, the people that say, "We're looking, it's doubling the tourists in town," it's just not accurate.
They're saying doubling the effort to bring tourists to town when it's unnecessary.
I can double the effort to bring more clients into my law practice, but it doesn't bring double the clients in. I'm lucky if I get 10 or 12% higher, and in some years, less. So, you can't equate advertising to more tourists, you just can't. The other thing is, just to give you an example, I was contacted by 80, 86 individuals during the course of the last, last month, while we've been debating this. 18 of them were non-residents. And I haven't been elected by them. So, I'm not going to include them in my numbers. 63 of them were residents. Seven of them said they were against, that's 11% of the 63, said they were against it because they were dead against public funds being used to promote hotels. Well, there's no public funds here. So, I don't know whether or not, if they knew there wasn't public funds, whether they'd be for it, but they were saying they didn't want general fund money to support tourism. We're not supporting it with any general fund money. 14 of them said, absolutely, no T-bid, they don't want any tourists in town, they wish we'd put a wall up around Ojai. That was 22%. 17 or 27% said, "You need to approve this for 10 years. Why do you make these people come back? Ojai's a tourist town. You need to approve it, 10 years. Give them whatever they want." And then 25 or 40% said that they were in favor of, of supporting local businesses, they were in favor of tourism, but they thought that the T-bid should be modified to a shorter period of time than 10 years. So, if I was, this is what I'm, this is what I'm faced with when having to make a decision. I can't make a personal decision. I wasn't elected to make a personal decision. I have to make a decision which I think is best for our community. And I can tell you, our community is dependent on transient occupancy tax. So, when I hear comments like, "The T-bid has absolutely nothing to do with the general welfare of Ojai," that's just not correct. Because the more people that we can have come to Ojai to pay hotel tax, drops to our bottom line on the general fund, and helps us pave roads. And helps us do a lot of other infrastructure things that we need to do. So, it's all interrelated. Here's an interesting fact. I've heard everything about traffic. So, I called Caltrans and I asked for two traffic studies. The first traffic study I asked was in 1996, and I wanted to get a traffic count at the 150 and 33. I didn't want it in downtown Ojai, because that would give me what I would consider to be an awful lot of local traffic. But at 33 and 150, there's a lot, that's where the tourists are going to be coming from. So, here's the traffic count, in 1996, 22,000 average daily traffic count per day. Guess what it was in 2015? 19,400. 2,600 less cars. So, I don't know where the traffic's coming from. But it's not going, at least in 2015, it wasn't going past 150 and 33. If it's more downtown, you know, I moved here in, in 1983, I moved to Miramonte. And I told the realtor, I said, you know, I just love going, I was from a small town in Connecticut that only had 1,500 people, and I said, "I love going to downtown Ojai, it's very quaint, reminds me of where I grew up." You know what the realtor said in 1983? "Well, don't go down there on the weekends, there's too much traffic." That was 34 years ago. Reminds me of Yogi Bear's old saying, "Nobody goes there anymore, because it's too crowded." This has always been an issue. The first time I ran for city council, when Souza ran, people were talking about the traffic. But I can tell you that generally speaking, I walk, but sometimes I drive on Saturdays and Sundays. I eat breakfast every Saturday or Sunday at Bonnie Lou's, or Sea Fresh, or- I eat breakfast every Saturday or Sunday at Bonnie Lou's or Sea Fresh or Cafamporium. I'm generally walking, but I can always get into those restaurants. And when I do drive, I never have a problem getting a place to park. I might have to park over where the, on a Saturday, I might have to park over where we have the farmer's market, but there's always parking spots there. I go to LA and I get frustrated with traffic. I come to Ojai even on a weekend and I bless the day that I'm there because of what we have in this town. But the tourism is very important to us. And sometimes I feel as though, if I was out there, I'd be saying the same things you guys that are saying, "No T-bid. I wanna leave it the way it is. I want Ojai to be small and quaint and all these visitors not here on the weekends." And quite frankly, probably if I was self-serving, that's what I would be saying. But then what happens to our TOT? What happens to the finances of our city? And I'm here to manage that as well. It costs a lot of money to put the T-bid together. I know what the city used to spend trying to promote tourism. We don't have to do that now. It comes from the tourists. And that's why my motion for five years, which is what it has been, but with some real oversight and with some representation on both of those, both of those boards, I think makes a lot more sense. Why should we have to go through this with a new T-bid every two years or every year when we can oversee it and modify the, the management plan on an annual basis? So that's the basis for my thoughts. That's the basis for my motion.
With Councilmember Blatts, I've often heard you say that you don't make your decisions based on, strictly on economics. Because if that was the case, we would do all kinds of things that make money in this town that we have turned down. And you mentioned that you had spoken to 100 people?
No.
Or how many people?
Sixty-three citizens, Ojai citizens, 18 non-residents.
Okay, are you talking about people that you spoke with personally or about the letters that we received?
Mostly people that I've spoken to personally, but some of the letters aren't here.
Yeah, because we, in the course of the last three months, we've received almost 100 letters. And of those, the majority asked, requested that we phase out the Ojai Tourism Improvement District. That is a fact. That is a fact.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just respond briefly? You know, there's trade-outs that we all want in Ojai. And one of the things the tourists bring us and what the TOT brings us, because we don't have a good sales tax base. If we wanted, if we wanted outlet malls like Camarillo, we could put an outlet mall across from Nordoff. And then maybe, guess what? Maybe we wouldn't have to promote tourism. But do we really want that? Do we want the bowling alley to turn into a Rite Aid? No, because we, we have the foresight not to allow chain stores in Ojai. That's part of what we are.
But you're still-
But if you wanted tax, if you wanted, if you wanted sales tax revenues instead of transient occupancy tax, that's what we would have to do.
Let me add something on a topic that I, you know, pat myself on the back, have considerable experience with, and that is government budgeting. It is true that we are heavily dependent on the TOT disproportionately. But it is the only real local industry that we have, and it's relatively clean. But if you look at the general fund and you compare our income in our general fund to the other cities in this county, we are getting a per capita return here to the general fund that is double seven of the other cities and half again as much as the two remaining. We are the highest per capita income to our general fund. So I don't really understand the argument that we don't have enough or we're so dependent upon tourism that we need more. It seems to me that we need to take a look at how we're doing it and where we're spending the money. Because in government, please, the, in government, you know, there's never enough money and there's always enough money, except in the most, you know, depressed areas in the state. We're hardly that. Uh, it's how we spend that money. And it just seems to me that the prudent thing for us to be doing right now is not to put the brakes on and slam them on and say to the community that we don't need this at all because we don't have the data. We don't have the data either way. But if we were to give ourselves two years at 1%, we would be slowing down just a bit. And if the OTID group would commit to a, a measured, um, evaluation with data and we as a city would commit to a measured evaluation as to impact on the community, then when we get to the next election, we would have good information for extending this and for allowing, four of us are gonna be up for reelection. It seems to me that that is the time when the community can really speak to this, what they want. We are, we are at a crossroads, folks. There are two visions of what this community is going to be like. You know, I'm not here to tell you which one. I, in my heart, I would like to go the other direction, go back a little bit when my kids were little. That's not gonna happen. On the other hand, putting our foot on the gas and just going hell bent for leather on this thing when we don't really know. I walk this town five, six miles a day. Day in and day out. And I can tell you, we got more traffic and we got more people. We do. No, yeah. We have them. I, they may not be going into the stores, they may not be staying in the motels, but the people are here. So what is going on? What is going on? Something's wrong with this. Let, let's take the, the traffic statistic, Paul, that you, you took. I'm not gonna dispute what you say as far as the numbers. But if we are not getting any more traffic in this town today after five years or even longer promoting tourism, where the hell are the, how are these people getting in here? By helicopter? Where are they parking their cars? They, some, something is wrong with our data. You know, we don't really know. And I'm not saying it's a bad thing. I'm just saying we do not know. So if we're going to renew, why not renew just as we are? Give the Chamber and the OTID, uh, two more years at 1% and take that time to figure this out. Because what's at stake is not the organization and the renewal in two years. This, what is it? Civ- uh, what's the name of the-
Civitas.
Civitas. Civitas is still gonna be here and there may be other people who can do it. We might even be able to do the work ourselves with other lawyers to extend it. And I would think we as a community, as a city council, we would be willing to share that cost if it appeared that it was going to be the benefit to the community to extend the OTID. We wouldn't necessarily have to push that all off onto the, the, the OTID or the, the Chamber to do it. But we're talking $30,000 to $60,000 to renew the thing with a generation of something like $5 to $7 million that can be brought in. You know, I, I've said this to people individually. I would be happy to go out and borrow the money if I didn't have it for an investment that would take $60,000 and turn it into $7 million. So that's a good deal, no matter who does it. It's just a question of, are we going to tie the hands of the people who follow us in office? Are we going to ignore the concerns of the city, uh, just to get this passed the next election? Or are we gonna take the two years, keep the thing going, measure it and figure out if this is the, our best future? I think that people could come together on it. And if it's not the best future and there's a different way to do it, we should consider that too.
Uh, I, I, I think we've, just to answer a couple of things. First of all, I, uh, I think we've established we can, that we can ensure annual control to a degree that we have not had before.
Well-
Number one. Number two-
Just saying, you like to have things corrected as we go. You know, we're trying to do that. I submit to you, you know, nobody's seen this and sat down and studied it, say we're in control of it. Because if we are in control of it, I don't think we're following the law.
All right. Well, I'll, all I'm saying is I asked questions and they were answered. And there's governance additions that were not in the previous, uh, re- regiment. But the second point I wanna make is regardless of how we vote on your amendment. All right? I'm gonna be, I just wanna give everybody notice that I'll be asking for, uh, one more amendment of the motion maker. And that is that we, um, since I reread the governance and that only affects after the first year, that we include a change in the budget on page nine to specifically add a tourism research miscellaneous activities category. So we have tourism funding, getting the facts we need to know about tourism. Because we've talked a lot about needing facts, but we haven't talked about a funding source. We can use this as a funding source for finding out the facts. So that's what I intend to do after we get to the, I'm gonna offer that suggestion.
Why not do all this during the two-year period?
Trying to craft this just off the top of our heads is, seems to me dangerous.
Oh, I thought about it a long time.
Well, okay. Well, that's first, I've seen it tonight when it was put before me.
So Mayor, can I, try a minute?
Go ahead, Mayor.
Um, I'm gonna be selfish. I don't necessarily see this, um, extending this out five years. That's just my thoughts on that. I would like to, um, and, and I think two years is, is probably fair, but I think three years, um, is where I'm gonna come from. And, and along with the three years is I'm not necessarily gonna vote for anything that doesn't ensure that we get the traffic study that we want and that we get the tourism study that, uh, Councilman Wierich just talked about. And that, I, I mean, it's just clear, we're basing a lot of decisions on our gut and on emotions and, and we need facts. And I'm not willing to stop to, to gather those facts 'cause I think we can walk and chew gum. So my proposal would be three years amended with the studies that I'm looking for personally that will help make better decisions for this community and coming out of the council.
But a three-year extension then puts it beyond and ties the next council.
That's my question of Matt, Mr. Summers. Can the next council, it's a whole new, it's a new council, can, can they do anything during that last, if, if three years pass?
With the three-year passage, uh, after the election in November of 2018 and the council seated in December or January of, uh, December 2018 or January 2019, the, that council would have the power to disestablish the district under certain limited facts, fraud, malfeasance, violation of law, or would have the power to adjust by approving the management plan each year, adjust the rates by a quarter percent. They wouldn't have the power to drop it to zero absent, uh, those three points, fraud, malfeasance or violation of law. But they would have the power to change the rates and they would have the power to amend the budget as to how the money is spent.
They would not have the power to phase it out?
No, but it would, under this proposal, it would phase out by itself one year later.
Right.
Yeah. Or to, and they couldn't just-
In other words, they wouldn't have the power to cut out that third year.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
The other thing that I wanted to add too, 'cause I, and I wasn't gonna argue the point of separating the, the two point, the two, uh, the percentage versus the years. But I'd be inclined to, um, go with the 1.5 so that there was monies to sustain the marketing that, that they need to do, yet ensure that there's money available to do the studies that we need to do. That's where I'm coming from. So.
Is that a motion? We have-
It's an amendment to your motion if, if, um-
I think we have to vote on that.
There is another amendment to the motion pending. I would suggest if that fails, the two-year one, then you could make your motion for three years.
Is there anything else we wanna? Okay, roll call on the two years and 1%?
Wait a minute, is that what we're voting on now?
That's, the motion on the table is an amendment to Councilmember Blatts's motion. Councilmember Blatts's motion was for renewal at five years at 1.5% with the council appointee on the Owners Association Board, the council appointee on the Visitors Bureau Board and the sentence to be added, uh, as stated by Mayor Protem Wierich, that activities and improvements is defined in the Streets and Highways Code sections could be funded by the assessment. Uh, that motion was, uh, proposed for amendment by Mayor Johnston to be two-year renewal and 1% rate with the other points stat. That is what is on the table.
Two years and 1%.
And the vote, to be clear, is a vote to amend the existing motion. If approved, the motion on, to the council would then be two years and 1%. That would take a second vote to then approve or reject that, that. If denied, it would then, uh, Councilmember Blatts's motion would spring to the table and you'd be voting five years or not. In five years of 1.5%. Or further amendments, as I expect, would immediately follow. So the question now is whether the motion on the table is gonna be two years and 1% or five years and 1.5%.
So it's gonna be two though?
The motion is whether it's gonna be reduced to 2%, pardon me, two years and 1% if that fails.
Then it becomes five years unless further modified.
Either five or some other number.
So we need roll call on that, Rick?
Councilmember Haney?
No.
Mayor Protem Wierich?
No.
Councilmember Blatts?
No.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes. Okay, motion fails. So we now have five years and about one and a half percent.
I would like to propose in a moment to the motion on the table, uh, to change the budget on page nine for the first year. Subsequent years will be subject to council review and approval. To reduce the sales and marketing percentage from 75 to 70%, increase, uh, put in a new category of tourism impact research slash miscellaneous activities of 5%. And continue the contingency renewal at 4% and the, um, uh, administration of 1%. I believe that adds up to 100. And ask if the motion maker would be open to that.
Yes. I'll amend my motion to include that.
Do you think you can repeat that? I'm certainly hoping Mr. Summers can.
Add to 100?
Seven, 70 for marketing, 20 for admin, four for contingency renewal and-
Five for tourism research miscellaneous activities and then 1%.
One for collection. In other words, you're shifting five out of sales and marketing-
Yes.
-to tourism impact research and miscellaneous studies. That does add up to 100%.
For the first year.
And it's worth noting that, are you making that solely for the first year or do you wish to make it for all the years, subject of course to future change by the council?
I, I-
You're setting facts on the ground or not, is that choice?
It's for the management plan, subject to changes in the future years.
Okay.
That's as I understood it.
Okay. My, my concern with that, when I do the simple math, is 5% of $425,000 is, I don't think that's enough to provide the studies that we're looking to, to perform. So would we, would we be better off looking at 60% for sales and marketing and increasing, um, the other funding source from 5% to 20%? So that's just my thoughts.
Yeah, that's more of a shift.
At, at 10%, at 10% of $425,000, you're talking $42,000. I don't know what a traffic study is gonna cost, but I know it's gonna cost more than that. So I'm just looking at to make sure that we have the funding to do the type of research that we, that this community is asking for.
Are you moving to amend it?
So, so my, then I would move to amend it from the 5% that Protem, uh, Wierich just stated and make that portion 20% and make the marketing and sales budget 60%.
Are we still discussing?
We need a second. Is there a second to that?
I will-
I'm not, I'm not sure your math added up, Councilmember Haney.
60 and 20 and 20 is 100%. You got a different math than I, oh, I, the 4%, I see what you're saying.
There's the other 5% and the other two items.
So four and one, so let's make that 15% then at the, uh-
So 15 to tourism improvement studies, et cetera? Okay.
All right, I am going to amend my motion to include that and I need a second.
A second?
Now we can have further discussion.
Okay. Well, all of this talk about a traffic study is based on the fact that Ojai hasn't managed the tra- the traffic. You know, we have failed to provide a pedestrian, bicycle and public transportation infrastructure that would make it possible for, for tourism to have less impact on our daily life if we had that. I just wanted to say that. And, um, Tim Roney from The Mob Shop wrote us a wonderful letter back in January addressing that. And the ci- and we are going to, we, we don't, we do not have the infrastructure to handle the tourists that we have now. We're lucky that all- to handle the tourists that we have now. We're lucky that all those tourists riding bicycles from Ojai Avenue on the sidewalk or weaving in and out of traffic haven't been killed. I still think it's a height of irresponsibility to invite people to Ojai when we don't have the infrastructure to save, to transport them safely. You know, we're, we're, we're pretty much acting as if we're a bicycle-friendly town, but we're not there yet.
Well, my, my response to be, to that would be, Susan, is the fact that we are doing a complete streets study.
Yeah, I'm on that committee.
That we are, we are in the, um, the grasp of actually turning Ojai into a bicycle-friendly community.
Yeah, but it's, it's four years away before all of that happens. It's in the process.
And I was saying in the interim that, um, the things that you just stated would be easy to agendize and to actually bring to staff's attention, and to actually start improving on some of those things sooner than later.
Well, I can assure you, I'm on the Complete Streets Committee. I have discussed this with Greg Grant, and these things take a long time.
Yeah. Okay, we need to kind of get ourselves focused. We have a motion, and the, the maker of the motion accepted your modification. Is that it, or are you planning to go with the 3 percent, about the three years?
Um, no, and I said, uh, um, percentages, I don't know if we were going to, I'll talk about that separately.
No, the number of years.
And the number of years would be three years.
Everything else stays at.
That's the.
Right.
Is that an amendment you're making, or is that asking the maker to accept?
That's an ask, and I'm, I'm waiting for Paul's reply.
Uh, I'd like to have a vote on the five years.
Okay. Motion on the, are you amending it for three?
I accept the other amendment.
He accepted the other parts of the amendment. So now we're going from three to five years.
Okay. You, you indicated earlier that you were not comfortable with anything more than three. You can amend the motion if you wish.
When we vote, you'll see how I vote.
Okay. Well, that's, okay. Is there any further discussion?
No.
Okay, roll call.
But not the three years.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
No.
Councilmember Francina?
No.
Mayor Johnston?
No.
That has not accomplished anything. You know, you can have happy fingers and that, but please kind of try to, okay, that's fine. I'm not sure what, what you heard back there versus what we heard up here, but, okay, now where are we?
So now we're back to, to another motion, am I correct?
Okay.
So right now, all motions on the table have failed.
Right.
You're back to square one, open for any new motions.
Okay, I, I.
Go ahead.
So I would like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Um, and I'd like, uh, our city attorney to help me with it. Again, I'd like to repeat what Councilman Blatz has stated. I would just like to amend it from five years to three years. Keep the, um, the tourism budget at 15 percent, the administration at our 20, uh, contingency at four, collection administration at, at one, and lower the sales and marketing to 60 percent. Am I correct?
And, uh, everything else, in other words, in this motion, except changing it to three?
Yes. And while I'm making the motion, we can get this over with. I'd like to, um, make the percentage at 1.5 for the three years.
All the governance issues, everything, and it's still included?
Stays intact.
All right. I would like to go on record as asking you, as, asking you if you would consider amending the motion to two years and 1 percent.
Have to have a second first.
The motion still requires a second.
Okay.
I second the motion.
All right.
Okay.
I'll repeat. I would like to go on record as having asked you if you would consider amending the motion for two years and 1 percent. I want that to be on record.
Make the motion and get a second.
I'm making a motion.
Okay, I'm, I'm seconding.
Request for an amendment.
Right.
Yeah.
This is the amendment vote. Two years and 1 percent.
Okay, so it's up to me, and I'm saying no.
It's on the record.
You made the motion to amend. Did you second it, Mr. Mayor? Then that would be up for vote first.
Did we already vote on that?
Technically, yes, but.
Okay.
You have the power to vote again.
Yeah.
And maybe things have changed.
That was the reason for dividing the question. It didn't work, but, okay, go ahead.
Me? Okay. Um, Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Blatz?
No.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
No.
Uh, Councilmember Haney?
No.
So I have a motion on the table now.
Yeah, we do.
It's freezing.
Three years, 1 and 1/2 percent, and, uh.
And with the tourism impact studies at 15 percent, to be taken out of the sales and marketing budget, dropping that down to 60 percent, and all the previous governance improvements discussed.
The new budget category being tourism research slash miscellaneous activities.
Tourism impact research.
Yeah. Slash miscellaneous activities.
Mrs. Souza.
All right, miscellaneous activities is a term used in the law.
But can't we just.
Yes.
And we all know what you're saying. Yeah, we all know what you're saying.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. We need roll call? Mayor?
Was it seconded?
I don't know what's going on over here. The, the underlying motion was seconded.
So the underlying motion, to restate it, is to approve the renewal, three years, 1.5 percent rate fixed, um, with a 15 percent tourism impact and miscellaneous studies budget item, and the previously discussed govern, governance improvements, which would be to add the language on page two, all activities listed under Streets and Highways Codes sections as activities and improvements could be approved, and would, uh, provide for council appointees to the Owners Association Board and the Visitors Bureau Board.
Correct.
Further discussion? Okay, roll call?
Um, Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Oh, yes.
Uh, Councilmember Francina?
No.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Johnston?
No.
Motion passes?
Motion carries.
Okay.
It's still today.
Yeah.
It's still today.
Okay, where's our agenda?
We love Ojai.
Yeah, we can't do the discussion. Council reports, I guess, is where we are.
Modified to reflect everything they just did. This point of order, do we need to adjourn now, uh, since it's so late? Were, are there still other non-deliberative items on the agenda?
You're, you're allowed to take up the items on the agenda that aren't numbered specific items, namely Councilmember report, City Manager report, and, uh, future agenda items. No action can be taken on any of those things. You can't take any more actions tonight. And you, for what it's worth, don't have to discuss those things. It's up to the council.
I say with the whole.
Does the City Manager have anything he'd like to add?
Well, the council, I was requested at the last meeting to give a, a report on, uh, what we're, what we're planning to do with sign, uh, sign ordinance enforcement. I can pass that out. I can give a quick report, or I can table that report to a future meeting.
Well, let's let him finish.
You want to just?
I need to.
Sure, I'd be happy to distribute this to the council. We'll make copies of the, available to the public as well. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, is there any council reports that, nope? Okay, well, then I guess we're come to the conclusion, and I would like.
We have future agendas.
Oh, future agenda items, go.
Yeah. Uh, I, I have some future agenda items I'd like to discuss. Number one, um, I, I want to repeat what I said during, uh, the public communications. I think it's only underlies listening to the testimony tonight. We're talking about trying to encourage other types of economic development in our community and diversification, that what is happening, um, what we heard, what we, has already been, um, found, you know, already been diagnosed from the, from the city, City Gate audit, and now reinforced by the petition we heard tonight. Uh, we, we have got to get some real understanding of, of what needs to be done and what is being done for the Community Development Department. And I really want to put on the next meeting's agenda a report from you, Mr. McCleary, as to what the plan is.
Uh, with all due respect, Mr. Mayor Protem, that, that gives me about two or three working days to, to do that analysis and provide that report. Uh, I really do not think that I can give a comprehensive report and that amount of time.
Didn't ask for comprehensive. Just like to know what your approach is going to be and discuss it, because it's been on the agenda of this council and on the radar of this council for literally more than a year, since before the City Gate report. I, I'm not asking for a comprehensive, but I would like some sort of, I think the community has due some sort of report from you as to what's, what your approach is going to be or what you're doing incrementally. That's my personal opinion, but I cannot dictate that. I'm only one councilperson.
Uh, Mr. Mayor Protem, um, and I'm throwing this out, I'm thinking out loud, particularly for the mayor who's, who, uh, likes to have things done openly rather than in closed session.
I'm talking openly.
Um, is that something that we can feasibly review and talk about in open session, in your opinion?
Well, I, I, if we're talking about, I'm not talking about personnel issues. I'm talking about the, 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 we have all of those City Gate recommendations that were made, that we paid money for. That's the kind of way it could be talked about in open. You know, like, here's an issue. Uh, for example, we hear constantly the issue of slow response. What's being done to address the slow response problem?
Okay.
For example. Uh, that's the kind of thing I'm talking about. Now, under, what I'm trying to get at is that this is, I believe, a, something of a crisis. Yeah, I feel, my personal opinion in the community, and we need to, uh, focus, uh, energy on this, and frankly, there's only two people that can address the issue. The City Manager and the person running the department.
How about this? What, we're going to meet this Saturday.
We could talk about it then.
And if we have a nice, open discussion and, and try to.
I, I agree with that.
Give a little more direction, and then you get an extra two weeks and three days.
That would be very helpful. I understand the concern, and I want to be as responsive as possible.
Okay.
Okay.
I agree. Let me ask you this, to not, to maybe just truncate tonight. Are we able to talk about future agenda items at our Saturday meeting?
If it's put on the agenda for discussion of future agenda items, yes. And in general, you're allowed at any meeting to add an item to, or request an item to be added to a future agenda. The trick is, you can't take action that night on that item.
I'm not asking for that, but we could talk about this coming Saturday, our, our plan.
Okay.
That's fine.
This Saturday, the, the thought is, is that, and this is not a homework assignment, as I told Bill, this is just a suggestion, but if each of us would sit down and try to identify, say, up to five general areas of responsibility that we have, that we'd like to see some results in, you know, like, you know, health and safety, planning and community development, uh, administration and public service, the, you know, the service to the public, uh, and I'm talking about like over-the-counter, uh, enforcement or regulations. There's some broad, broad areas, and then within that, we have some topics that we need to talk about. Uh, and so then if we had, let's say, take the five issues that you'd like to get off dead center, that we've been talking about forever, whether, you know, leaf blowers and marijuana, uh, whatever they are, the sign ordinance. So five areas of general, you know, change that we are, or, pardon me, general results, and five maybe specific issues, and then we have kind of a roundtable discussion, and then out of that, we'll make some notes, decide what, you know, kind of get some priorities to it, and then I'll sit down with the City Manager and say, okay, let's get this on the agenda, and we'll just start scheduling it out so that it comes back to us. Okay, is that?
We're going to be together Saturday, so.
Works. Understood.
My, my concern with Saturday is, I'm not, I'm quite sure what the format is, is, um, what, you know, to have a discussion about something that's got to be on the agenda. So what are we discussing on Saturday?
You would be discussing what to discuss in the future. You can't have an open agenda. That's not allowed. You'd be discussing what to discuss in the future, in terms of setting a priority list.
So that's, that's what the topic is, future agendized items.
We're, we're going to talk eyeball to eyeball and kind of get, get our arms around what it is we're faced with and get a sense from each other of where we want the priorities, because if we don't get our priorities narrowed down and get some focus, nothing's going to get changed.
I agree with what, I agree with what you're saying. What I'm trying to say is, I'm just looking at, um, our agenda right here. You know, it states what the discussion item is. So clearly, we're meeting Saturday. We're meeting at 9:00. What's, what's, what's the agenda say we're doing this Saturday?
First, we're going to do some yoga.
As I understand it, the agendized item will be discussion of council priorities. That's it.
Strategic plan.
Strategic.
There, see, I love.
And, and as I understand it, we have a request from the Mayor Protem to also have on the agenda an opportunity to discuss future agenda items.
Yes.
So, Gail, if you could please make sure we have that on the special meeting agenda, if we have council concurrence on that. Thank you.
And what time is it on Saturday, and where is it on?
9:00 AM in these chambers.
We're going to have, like, coffee and rolls, chat, take it through lunch. If we feel like we're getting somewhere, we'll take it into the afternoon a little bit. If we don't, we'll just call it to a close.
So the taxpayers are feeding us?
Well, I don't know if they are now, but we're going to, we'll, we'll have food here.
Are we going to contribute?
Yeah, well.
Why don't you take up collection on Saturday and write checks?
Yeah.
So the tax, not on the taxpayer dime.
Right. Okay. Okay, thanks, guys, and gals.
Meeting is adjourned. You got to hit the cap.
Oh, adjourned?
You're a witness, you know.